Eighth regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee to order. Tonight is the first night of Passover, so Ha'Pisach Samax.
Thank you.
Say it right, Steve. Say it the right way.
Close enough.
All right. Thank you. So at this time, I would ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and Steve has his flag. By Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America. Hey, so before we get into some nuts and bolts, I am so happy to introduce Brett Collins, who is our newest Lancaster representative. He is filling in for the remainder of Elise Crossland's term and he is on the ballot for the elections whenever they occur. So we're so happy that you're joining us for the rest of this year and look forward to you being with us throughout the next three years. So Brett, you want to say a few words about yourself, your family, and how much Joe Gleason had to pay you to be on our team?
I'm still waiting for that check, Joe. I've been in Lancaster for eighteen or so years. I got two kids at Mary Rollinson, both in fifth grade. My wife is a teacher at Luther Burbank. And I've been on the fire department in town here for...
Okay, we're having some audio difficulties. Yeah. Brett, can you say you've been on the fire department for how many years? Oh, all right, go ahead Brett.
I lost audio there for a second.
Okay, how many years on the, we didn't hear how many years on the fire department, in the fire department? Brett, how's your audio doing?
It keeps freezing on me here.
Okay. Can you, how many years have you been in the fire department?
Eighteen, nineteen years.
Okay, well, welcome. And I hope before not too much time goes by, we're all sitting in the school committee room in the Emerson Building. So Alita, does it help if folks who are not speaking have their microphone muted? Do you think that helps? Can you hear me? Okay, so, um... Does it help if folks have their microphones muted if they're not speaking? Todd is saying yes. So if you're not speaking, please keep your microphone on mute. If you want to participate, I will watch for your hand. When I recognize you, you can unmute and then mute again. I think that that's one of the issues with Zoom is that the platform gets bogged down, correct? Todd, just nod. Okay, all right. So speaking of Zoom, this is a new format for a lot of folks, including ourselves. And had some emails that, to the effect that people thought we were having a secret meeting and that folks were being censured. And I referred them to the statement that we have on our agenda, which basically lists the advisory of MASC, Massachusetts Association of School Committees, about using Zoom. And so the last time we used it, we found that there were a lot of folks on and it bogged us down. And I do think it's important to note that our school committee follows, adheres to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. And Governor Baker has altered the law, issued some waivers, and I will include that document with the meeting materials. So we are compliant. Also, a reminder that public comment is not a requirement of open meeting law, but the school committee wants to continue to include it. And while we're figuring Zoom out, the best way to accommodate this is to have people submit their comments to me to be read. And that's what we're going to do tonight. So like I said, we're still learning how to use the features of Zoom and that we hope to find a way to accommodate people presenting their comments for future meetings. So any questions on that? Okay, so now I will read the citizens' comments that were submitted to the audience. If you want a copy of the comments, you can request them through the superintendent's office by getting in touch with Alita Masterson. So, okay, so I'm going to read. So I won't be looking at you. I'm just going to read. But our protocol is that the school committee does not respond to public comments. So I will just read what I have. And I organized them in the order in which I received them. So the first one is from Jim and Janet O'Shea from Bolton. And what? Did somebody say Kathy? I'm sorry, what?
Anybody that wants to request records, they have to go through the records request officer, which is Pat Maroney.
But is that what this is, Mike?
Yes, those would be a public record, so they could get them through.
They would have to do that. All right, so will you let the minutes reflect that, Alita?
And the link is at the bottom of our meeting packet on the website.
Okay, and you'll have the, my apologies. So the link to request materials is at the bottom of the agenda or the website? Alita?
Meeting packet in the website.
Okay, all right. Sorry about that. Okay, so again, Jimmy Jared O'Shea, Bolton. "We are incredibly disturbed but not surprised by the way the criminal behavior of a math teacher in our district has been addressed by school and district administration. And we are equally disturbed by the questionable findings put forth in the executive summary of the investigation into such behavior, which sadly had such a narrow scope. In all of our years of experience in education, we would never suspect that an allegation of a teacher sharing nude photos of a student would not rise to the level of notifying the superintendent or the chair of the school committee. As we are being asked to believe, as described in the executive summary of the report, that the principal and human resources director were aware of these allegations for months, never mentioned them to the superintendent. Are we also being asked to believe that the superintendent, principal, and human resource director were closely together over the course of the next three months to investigate this teacher's inappropriate actions? And neither the principal nor the human resource person ever mentioned anything about those nude photo allegations. The three of them must have met multiple times over the course of those months to discuss the teacher, her behaviors, and strategize a plan for her discipline, yet it was never mentioned. On top of that, the superintendent claims that even when she did hear the allegations via the affidavit and then a conversation with DCF, that she never spoke to the principal about it or questioned him any further. This seems negligent and highly suspect. It is obvious that the administrative oversight and judgment in our district is significantly lacking. This is not the first time we have observed the breakdown of administrative oversight in the Neshoba District, where the safety and needs of children were put on the back burner in order to protect the image of administrators or to prove a point to a student or a family. It is unfortunate that the scope of this investigation was so narrow, as there undoubtedly have been other students who have been victimized by this teacher and who deserve to be validated and supported. But the report seems to be only focused on clearing the names of particular administrators as opposed to addressing the potential victims of this teacher. We believe the school committee has stood by long enough and accepted the administrators' tenuous explanations for the mishandling of these events. At the end of the day, we left a school committee to be responsible for and to oversee the safety and education of our students, and it's time you stop deferring to those who are obviously incapable of the job." The next comment comes from Kathy Romeo from Bolton. "Thank you for, advance for taking the time to read my comments and questions. I would ask that you read them aloud at the school committee meeting on April 8th, as we are not allowed to be present to make citizens' comments. After reading the summary of the executive report of investigation into the Neshoba Regional District's handling of complaints about the activities of teacher Dorothy Veraka, my primary concerns are surrounding the leadership of the high school going forward and how the school recovers. I currently have three kids in the school and one more coming. And seeing what has happened under the current leadership makes me worried for the future of Neshoba Regional High School. My first question is, why is Mr. D. Domenico still the principal of Neshoba Regional High School? After hearing from a student about nude photos of a teacher to another student, no 51A was filed and there was no follow-up. The details of his shortcomings are highlighted in the report, so I don't need to go into more detail. Why didn't Superintendent Clutchy look into this matter any further? She failed us as the leader of the administration. And then Superintendent Clutchy saw the formal investigation at the latest on March 11th, which concluded there was gross negligence on the part of Mr. D. Domenico." She says, "Doc, I don't think he is." Again, she did nothing. And as of today, April 70th, he is still being paid as our principal. While the position of principal is currently filled, we cannot be conducting a search for a new one. This is concerning to me, as time is running out to find a good candidate for 2020, 2021. I am also worried that under the current leadership, what kind of candidate would want to step in and work in this district? It's a mess. And I am also concerned about Superintendent Clutchy's ability to hire a strong team. She hired both Dr. Mr. D. Domenico and Mrs. Stojka. It was evident that they made some critical mistakes when it came to protect our students. At the end of the day, Superintendent Clutchy is the driver of the bus. Because of her decisions, actions, and lack of actions, I am highly concerned about the leadership at the high school. I do not have any faith that the leadership of the current administration has the teachers and students in their best interest. One of my high school kids mentioned the other day that in an elementary school, they were taught, "When you see something, say something." Last June, there was a very brave student that stood up to say something when she saw something. What happened since then is a disgrace to our school and our community. Examples set for our kids by the adults in authority, the principal, HR, and superintendent at the high school makes me sick. How will any student feel that they can come forward now? As a parent, I am embarrassed for our school and extremely disappointed in our leadership and worried about the future of our school district. The students and teachers deserve more than this." The next comment comes from Mary Ann Savage, who's from Bolton. "The Neshoba Regional School Committee has oversight of and responsibility for the school system. So protections against the neglect and abuse of the NRSD student victims ultimately become your responsibility and requires your urgent action. Superintendent Clutchy must terminate Paul D. Domenico immediately, given the findings of wrongdoing with the mishandled DV abuse complaints. NRSD leadership are mandated to report suspected abuse complaints to DCF. Whenever suspected abuse of a minor becomes known, a 51A report is the only action necessary. Just because an NRHS student graduated a... Paul D. Domenico doesn't absolve NRSD from protecting the recent graduates from abuse. This investigation report reeks of a cover-up. The June Parent A complaint to Paul D. Domenico should have immediately triggered a 51A and report to DCF, which could have said, 'I've been informed by an adult parent of potential inappropriate sexual relationship between teacher DV and her students, and former students, which may involve shared nude photos and driving of underage minors under the influence of alcohol.' There was no need for Paul D. Domenico to have any discussion with any potential student victims or with the alleged abuser. Paul D. Domenico may not have believed what he heard, but it wasn't his responsibility to question or investigate. It would have been ideal had such a report been filed and all school leadership taken a step away from any investigation. 51A report was required by law because a mandated reporter was aware of suspected abuse of a minor. Instead, the abuser was returned to the classroom following a mismanaged internal investigation, which relied on her quote-unquote "reputation." This behavior is the perfect storm which allows abusers to thrive. Determining the consequences for the neglect and abuse of the high school students and recent graduate victims is ultimately your responsibility. I say victims because this failed investigation did not find all the misconduct of DV. More than one student was harmed. Urgent improvements are needed to avoid inappropriate relationships with students and abuse of students by teachers. Provide strong leadership to the NRHS student body by putting basic protections in place, including dismiss Paul Domenico. The entire NRHS team needs mandated reporting urgently. School leaders must remove suspected abusive teachers from classrooms. Upon findings of guilt, dismiss the abuser and anyone in the change of command who was remiss in reporting and who thereby assisted in any cover-up. NRSD must welcome student and community reports of abuse involving the adults. Make it possible to log a suspected abuse report from NRSD.nrhS.net. Minor victims rightly fear retaliation by adult abusers, who often threaten victims to remain silent. Believe the victims resist the urge to question or investigate the substance of the accusations, as this is best left to the trained abuse investigators at DCF. NRSD must ensure appropriate teacher boundaries are defined and respected. Teachers should not refer students on social media. There should be consequences for inappropriate teacher conduct with students. Holding student sessions on safe online behavior this past fall while not enforcing mandatory reporting of abuse, safe online teacher behavior, and boundaries for teachers was hypocritical. And as a result, this leadership team has lost the respect of the NRSD community. Amid fall, put strong leadership in place and put protective measures in place to reform this disgraceful situation. NRSD School Committee has taken too long to address this. Not holding public sessions after withholding the investigator's report from the NRSD community is infuriating. I lost confidence in the NRSD leadership team, and I am now disappointed in the school committee's ability to implement reforms. Please read this letter and put measure in place to reform NRHS regarding mandated reporting." The next one is from Grace, I think it's Sakardo, and she's from Bolton. "I'm writing a response to the report of investigation into the Neshoba Regional School District's handling of complaints about the activities of teacher Dorothy Veraka. I ask that my comments be read at the April 8th school committee meeting. I won't reiterate the laundry list of failures, mistakes, and disastrous judgment calls made by members of the current Neshoba administration. Instead, I will pose questions and a call to action. My primary question is this: Who is protecting our students from physical and emotional harm? There's always been predators lurking where there are children. Luckily for most children, there are many, many more trusted adults in their lives whom they can rely on to protect them. This is how the guidance, 'If you see something, say something,' works. It requires that the responsible adult who you tell will step in and take care of you. Mr. D. Domenico failed to be that trusted, responsible adult. An administrator who prioritizes student safety could never have failed so spectacularly. Alita, who puts children first, would not stop until every lead was investigated, every question asked, every parent contacted, and no stone unturned to discover the truth regarding a potential sexual violation. His actions were the opposite, dropping the ball at every opportunity. This means one of two things: He made a conscious effort to avoid finding incriminating information, or he is grossly incompetent in the protection of student safety. Either way, it is grounds for dismissal, as he does not have the character or competence that his job duties require. Why is he still on paid leave? Why has there been no disciplinary action? Mr. Stojka demonstrated a nearly equivalent level of incompetence in her failure to take allegations seriously and to ensure the principal performed the investigation that was unequivocally warranted. She allowed the principal to avoid discovering an inconvenient truth. Her investigation reached its conclusion based on statements by the accused. Imagine if all trials only heard from witnesses for the defense and none from the prosecution. An HR director can't properly assess an accusation of a sexual violation. She is unfit for the job and should be terminated. Report carefully details what Superintendent Clutchy knew and when she knew it. She was shocked and blindsided to learn of nude photos in the fall, yet made no attempt to learn the facts of the June report. She was emotionally affected by the allegations of sexual misconduct, yet chose not to ask if there were other potential victims. She drew inaccurate conclusions about the validity of the allegations and refused to revise her opinions despite evidence from credible sources. She failed to investigate or correct the shortcomings of the principal's actions, choosing instead to focus on PR. These are not the actions of someone whose priority is student safety. The culture she created does not prioritize taking abuse seriously. To date, she has taken no ownership and issued no disciplinary action for the egregious mistakes made by her staff. Her management of this crisis has failed on every level. In summary, the actions of the principal, HR director, and superintendent fall far short of the standard our children deserve and parents demand. It's time for accountability. We need the school committee to provide the strong leadership that the administration has failed to demonstrate." The next one is from Nanachka Rogers from Bolton. "It pains me to say this, but after reading the summary investigation report, I lost confidence in the administration at the high school level. I'd like to know what is the plan for leadership at Neshoba?" I'd like to know what is the plan for leadership at Nishoba? We are currently paying two principals, and I have not heard anything about forming a committee to find a new one. We were at a crossroads, and I um, employ you. Do make the big changes necessary to right the ship. The one fact that keeps coming back to me is that if Parent A had not gone to the police, Dorothy would still be teaching, and we would never know what happened. Our kids deserve better. The next comment is from Lorraine Remasco from Bolton. What are the names of any and all individuals who had access to read seeing the full investigator's report? It's not limited to individual school committee members, including the chair, superintendent, and any members of her staff, representatives of Murphy, Essie, Tumi, and Lahein. For each individual who has had access, read seen to the full report, redacted or not, what is the date on which they received the report? What are the names of any and all individuals who have had access to read seeing the executive summary of the investigator's report prior to the school committee executive session on March eleventh, two thousand twenty? Note, this inquiry includes, but is not limited to, individual school committee members, including the chair, the superintendent, and any members of her staff, any representative from of Murphy, Essie, Tumi, and Lahein. For each individual who has access to read seeing the executive summary, redacted or not, prior to March eleventh, two thousand twenty, school committee executive session, what is the date on which they received the executive summary? The next comment is from um, Jacqueline Reinhardt. She lives in Lancaster. I was an attendee at the school committee meeting last month and anticipated the opportunity to voice citizens' comments regarding the investigation prepared by Tim Norris, that's why. I am surprised that the same opportunity is not being afforded Nishoba parents and families for the meeting this evening. In lieu of active Zoom participation, I respectfully submit my comments to be read. First, I believe that Paul D. Domenico should be terminated immediately. I question why he has been permitted to remain on the payroll until this time. Further, I question the appropriateness of Ms. Stoica's continued employment as Director of Human Resources, given both her and Mr. D. Domenico's poor decision-making and inability to effectively communicate significant allegations made against Veraca directly to Superintendent Clunche in June of two thousand nineteen. Second, I am concerned about the information outlined in the report prepared by Mr. Norris, and specifically the fact that Superintendent Clunche was largely unaware of the seriousness of the allegations made against Veraca. Given this, it is troublesome that no official investigation documentation was requested by Superintendent Clunche in June um, June, July of two thousand nineteen of Mr. D. Domenico or Ms. Stoica, despite having various conversations among Mr. D. Domenico, Ms. Stoica, and Superintendent Clunche noted on page seven, and that the group was unable to recall if they had a conference call. There is an increasing level of accountability, superintendents and school committees requiring them to effectively manage and navigate school districts, their employees, their students, their families, and the community at large. One notable challenge our district faces in meeting those needs is directly impacted by the current relationship the high school students and Bolton, Stowe, and Lancaster communities have with the school committee and the superintendent. As the allegations unfolded, the district had to undertake a rapid acute crisis response, which Mr. Norris highlighted in his report, indicating that the district had its hands full, to say the least, trying to figure out what it could and could not say to the public at various school committee meetings and in response to numerous media inquiries. As a result of what I can only assume was inadequate recommendations made by the P R firm referred in Ms. Norris's report, page thirteen, to Superintendent Clunche, the result was continued mistrust and accusation. Now more than ever, it is crucial that Superintendent Clunche and the school committee be transparent with the Lancaster, Bolton, and Stowe communities about what specific actions will be taken to avoid uh, continued insult, to ensure the safety and well-being of all students, and to make sure that our teachers and administrators are being supported, in particular, what policy and training considerations have been made, and how the district intends on integrating Mr. Norris's recommendations regarding good decision-making outlined on page seventeen. What corrective action plan does does the super does the school committee envision for Superintendent Clunche, if any? How will Superintendent Clunche and the school committee ensure that there are clear policies and procedures for reporting allegations, investigating said allegations, and taking necessary action to protect the district from further allegations? And most importantly, how and how and when will additional support for our students be allocated, whose physical safety and mental health is of a support? Appreciate your time and consideration. I'm I'm looking at these. I know, I think one did not get copied on to this, and I will have to um, um, retrieve it. So let me just read this last one, then I'll I'll dive into um, Gmail and and find it. Um, Teresa Arden, Stowe. I am shocked and appalled at what has transpired in regard to the Dorothy Veraca situation. What I can't believe besides the nude photograph issue is that student A told Mr. D. Domenico that a sex act happened between Ms. Veraca and a student, and this event wasn't taken seriously. Other than being introduced in the beginning, it wasn't brought up anywhere in the investigation document till the end where it mentioned that the student being over sixteen and graduated means it wasn't illegal. How is a teacher allegedly performing a sexual act with a student not followed up on by administrators? Why is this not taken seriously? And how is it that all the incoming freshmen year after year hear stories about Dorothy Veraca having inappropriate relationships with students, and the administration has no idea? Even if the nude photograph situation was all Mr. D. Domenico's fault, the head of H R also knew about these accusations. Ultimately, Ms. Clunche is responsible for the inadequacy and poor communication of her staff. She clearly is forced in an environment where these events are not taken seriously. How does she not have a meeting with Mr. D. Domenico and the H R director to discuss the ride home situation with alcohol when she returns from vacation? Boggles my mind that Ms. Clunche wouldn't have done her due diligence and contacted the student about the ride home herself, or at the minimum followed up with Mr. D. Domenico to make sure he did. These events are unacceptable. It's embarrassing to be part of the school district. Mr. D. Domenico should be fired immediately, and so should the H R director and Ms. Clunche. And all of you sitting on the school board who have defended these administrators should consider stepping down. None of you involved with protecting them can escape this smear on your record at this point. You've lost the trust of all the parents in the district by looking like you are hiding information. Private meetings delaying getting report results to us and making these meetings inaccessible to us parents only angers us. The company that I work for has Zoom meetings with a hundred participants. This meeting should be on Zoom, not on YouTube. So I, there's one more. I know it. I don't know. It should have gotten copied with the rest of them. Just give me a couple seconds to call it up. I apologize. Okay, got it. Hang on. Hold please. Here it is. Okay, so this is from um, Hady Sinclair. Uh, she lives in Lancaster. She asked that this be read. Please do not censure the voice of the public on this most important topic. The report of investigation in the Nishoba Regional School District's handling of complaints about the activities of teacher Dorothy Veraca. Parents have every right and indeed, I believe, responsibility to speak and share concerns when it comes to discussing the way that our administration addressed Dorothy Veraca's wildly inappropriate contact with students. Please hold an open meeting via Zoom, including room for students' comments. I have a lot of outstanding questions and concerns about this report. Um, I read the report from the investigation and saw resulting articles such as this gem. Um, it's just, it's it's links to other um, um, articles, not to the investigation. Um, but I will be adding this to the other list that I just read. So uh, folks that are interested in getting this document can check out those links. Um, as a volunteer for the Boy Scouts, I regularly have to take training to identify grooming behavior of Veraca, and I must report anything I see that could be construed as such. Is our principal not guided by the same? Do we not expect him to fully and completely investigate when a parent comes to him with information about naked photos that a teacher sent to a fifteen, sixteen-year-old child? Do you really think that trying to get the two student witnesses in is sufficient? It is remotely appropriate not to contact, is it remotely appropriate not to contact the parents of the students, all of them? In question and investigate the teacher thoroughly, putting around lead and contacting the police to complete a full investigation. Because that didn't happen, a pedophile returned to the school months later to teach more vulnerable children. Is that even remotely acceptable? Please let me out of help out here. Physical or emotional injury includes sex abuse that involves a two-step process, an immediate call to D C F, a child outreach hotline hotline, and submission of a completed fifty-one A form to appropriate D C F office. It's not vague. It did not. It it is not vague. It did not happen last June. I do not believe Superintendent Clunche acted appropriately regarding Veraca driving students home. This is not acceptable. Student A told Mr. D. Domenico that there were rumors about Veraca having relationships with students. It was common knowledge among students for years that Veraca offered to give rides to students if they were unable to drive due to drinking. I don't think this was appropriately investigated, and I do not believe Clunche did her best to protect our students and community. The situation is ridiculous. I want an administration that cares about sexual abuse of students, whether they are male or female. Yes, it is still pedophilia when it is a boy having sexual contact of any kind with a teacher. Stoica, as N R S D Director of Human Resources, also acted with incredibly poor judgment. Um, if it happened in any workplace, it would be absurd. Please read and address them at the next school committee meeting. I do not see any other option for Superintendent Clunche than to terminate Paul D. Domenico immediately. Given the findings of wrongdoing in the report, as of April sixth, he remains on our payroll, which is baffling. We need to pick a new principal, one who will not fail utterly to investigate when a parent comes to tell them to them with a story such as Dorothy Veraca's behavior with the children at our school. We must begin our search for new principal. Uh, please do better for our children. Okay? And that is it for the uh, citizens' comments. So um, the next item on our agenda is the N R H S Investigation Summary Report. Let me uh, tee that up for folks. Tonight, attorney Tim Norris of Norris Murray and Pellicwen LLC will present the executive summary of the report of the investigation entered in the Shova Regional School District's handling of complaints about the activities of teacher Dorothy Veraca. On October thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, a mslive.com article quoted an affidavit filed by Lancaster Police Officer in the Dorothy Veraca Criminal Matter. That article indicated that the high school principal, the parent in June, two thousand nineteen, that Veraca had shared nude photos of herself with an um, N R H S student and failed to take action. On November first, two thousand nineteen, I informed the superintendent that an investigation was needed based on this information, and at the November thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, and at the November thirteenth, two thousand nineteen, Special School Committee meeting, the school committee authorized engaging an independent third-party attorney to lead an investigation into the matter. Um, at the November thirteenth meeting, uh, the Personnel Subcommittee was charged with vetting attorneys and bringing forth a recommendation. On November twenty-sixth, two thousand nineteen, the school committee appointed attorney Tim Norris um, to lead our investigation. Um, our special counsel for the purpose of conducting an investigation and advising the committee regarding the district's handling of allegation of a teacher's inappropriate conduct toward a student and other such matters as assigned. Attorney Norris began his investigation the week of December second. He provided updates to the school committee on December third, December eighteenth, January fifteenth, January twenty-ninth, and February twelfth. The February twelfth update indicates that attorney Norris had met with myself and Vice Chair Elaine San Filippo earlier that day to provide an overview of his investigation and to discuss a date for presenting the report um, to the committee. Uh, the school committee's attorney, Mike McCarr, was also at that meeting. Um, since attorney Norris was not available for the next school committee meeting, which would have been on February twenty-eighth, we agreed that he would present the executive summary of report to the school committee during an executive session on uh, March eleventh. Um, the vice chair and I met with attorneys Norris and McCarr on um, March tenth to review a draft of the executive summary. The school committee then received a copy of the report at the executive session meeting on March eleventh. Others in attendance at that executive session meeting, and they were um, Superintendent Clunche, Ms. Stoica, uh, Paul D. Domenico, and his attorney Sheila McCarthy also received the report at that executive session meeting. Uh, copies of the report were collected both after the March tenth and eleventh meetings. School committee initially planned to have attorney Norris present the report publicly at our meeting on three twenty-five. However, circumstances made presenting at the three twenty-five meeting difficult. The school committee announced that the public presentation would be at uh, this meeting tonight. Um, so I, at this point, will turn it over to uh, Tim Norris to present his report.
Okay, thank you. Can you hear me okay? Give me a thumbs up. There we go. Um, so I'm uh, I'm Tim Norris. Uh, I am the investigator who was appointed by the school district. Um, I was appointed to investigate uh, the administrators, the administration's handling of information that allegedly came forward to the principal regarding nude photos sent by a teacher to a student. Um, so uh, I know there have been some some comments and so forth about the scope of the investigation. That is the scope of the investigation that I was asked to do. Um, I didn't investigate other conduct by the teacher towards other students. At the time that I commenced my investigation, the teacher had already been dismissed from employment. And my understanding was that the police department uh, that led the investigation um, was investigating and did their best presumably to investigate everything um, that they could find out about that teacher's conduct regarding the students at issue and any other students. Um, so whatever they came up with is what they came up with. Um, and that was not, you know, doing a uh, supplemental criminal investigation was not within the scope of uh, what I was asked to do and not within the scope of what I did. Um, the other thing I didn't do is investigate uh, specifically whether other teachers were aware of Ms. Veraca's conduct. Um, the investigation I was doing was about administrators. Um, and so I focused on what administrators knew, um, what administrators were told. Um, I did believe uh, that it was relevant to know if there was widespread knowledge within the high school of Ms. Veraca's behavior, and I did do some interviews um, towards trying to uncover whether that was the case. Um, the interviews I did did not give me any uh, suspicion that Ms. Veraca's behavior was was well-known um, among adults within the building. Um, I know that people have claimed that uh, her behavior was known um, among students. Um, I did speak to some students. And you know, I can, as as I go through the findings, I can talk about um, what those students said. Um, at one point um, in December of two thousand nineteen, um, through the school committee and through my up, one of my uh, written updates, I did request that other people in the community who had knowledge that was relevant to my investigation come forward uh, and let me know. And um, I got three people that came forward. Um, and I'll talk in in the findings, and they're referenced, um, not by name, but referenced within the report as well. So there was not a um, you know, a a large number of people that came forward in response to this to say that there was other conduct out there, and if if I had received that sort of information, then um, you know, I certainly. You know, I certainly, you know, would have considered, you know, whether the investigation should go in that direction, but that was not. Something that happened. So. You know, I was hired as an outside. Impartial investigator to look at the conduct of this administration relative to the Veraca matter. When I was hired, I didn't know anyone in this, within the school administration. I had no prior relationships with anyone on the school committee. I had never met Mike Macaro. I didn't know Mike. I was familiar with his firm, as I'm sure his firm is familiar with my firm. We both. Are lawyers who do the same kind of work. Were competitors essentially. So I approached this with an open mind based on. You know, my understanding of the scope of the investigation and my ethical responsibilities to conduct a fair. And accurate investigation into this matter and based upon. Over thirty years of experience as an attorney, including as an investigator. You know, within the United States Marine Corps and, you know, doing workplace investigations in various contexts since then. So. What I'm going to discuss tonight in terms of my executive summary report. Are the following areas. I'm going to speak about the process I followed in conducting this investigation, essentially the methods I used. I'm going to talk about my factual findings and summarize the key facts I learned during the investigation. And I'm going to talk about my analysis of specific issues. In particular, community member contributions and what, you know, what I made of those contributions. The sufficiency of the principal's investigation in June, two thousand nineteen. This is a short summary of of subjects that are germane to the investigation. As I'll, as I'll mention in terms of the process, there's a longer report where I deal in in more detail with. You know, the principal's investigation and my assessment of of why I made certain findings in with regard to the principal. I also will talk about my analysis of Superintendent Clancy's knowledge of relevant events and why I came to the. Findings I did with regard to, you know, what she knew and when she knew it. I'm also going to talk about my analysis of mandatory reports that. Either should or shouldn't or, you know, could have been made regarding the information that came into the possession of both the principal. And the superintendent and I can talk about why I reached the conclusions I reached. And then finally, I'm going to talk a little bit about my conclusions and recommendations and and what. From my perspective are the next steps that fall within the purview of the school committee and the purview of the school administration. So in terms of the process, having been hired by the school committee, I recognized, you know, as contrasted with an administration, which sometimes. When I do this kind of work, I'm hired by the superintendent. I recognize that I would likely come into contact with information about students and about employees. That school committees are not generally entitled to receive. And, you know, because school committees employ one person, you know, well, you know, sometimes more than one, but the superintendent is the main person they employ sometimes. You know, the business manager and and certain other positions that have been. Left out of ed reform, but but for the most part, the employees of the school district are employed under the. Direction of the superintendent of schools. And on top of that, student information is generally is protected by state and federal law. And cannot be made. Public beyond people with a need to know, you know, within education, so. I had an early discussion in this investigation with Mike Macaro, the the school district's attorney. To talk about an approach to this wherein there would be three levels. To this investigation. At sort of the most confidential level would be information that I received directly from. The witnesses that I interview, some of whom. Wish to not wish to not be identified. Wish to remain confidential. And I received information from them, which, you know, they wanted to remain confidential and that I received in order to assess their credibility. And provide context to the information that they were giving me. So that that information, you know, remains with me. The next level in the investigation was the full investigative report, which deals, which basically, you know, sets forth all the findings. And sets forth in a more detailed fashion, some of the analysis behind. Why I made certain findings, for example, why I credited. One witness over another as to specific facts that I found. And so that that is the second layer and the top layer is what you see before you in the executive summary. Which is the information that is appropriate to provide to the school committee. A lot of information regarding the superintendent, who is the employee of the school committee. And the same information is that which the school committee has chosen to share with the public. In this, in this report and in my my comments tonight. So in conducting interviews, in addition to trying to get the information that the witness had to give me. I also assessed the credibility of witnesses by comparing the testimony of witnesses to the testimony of other witnesses. To what was contained in documents such as emails, what was contained in contemporaneous notes that the witnesses may have taken. And in some instances, I took sworn statements. To ensure that the information I was getting from witnesses was. You know, what they would stand behind under the pains and penalties of perjury. So the interviews I've detailed in the report, the individuals that I've interviewed, in some cases, I interviewed them more than once. In some instances, I interviewed them. More than twice and. In some instances, took a statement and other instances just relied on my notes depending on. My assessment of the importance of the witness to the investigation. So I mean, I started my investigation by interviewing Miss Stoica, who had in possession a lot of the. Documents that related to the proceedings, disciplinary proceedings involving Ms. Veraca. And I received from her a lot of the documents, policies and. Other documents from the various files that related to this matter that were in the possession of the school district. I also interviewed Nan O'Neil, who was an attorney from Murphy Hesse Tumi in La Hayne. She had originally been tasked with doing this investigation. And then at some point, the decision was made to have an outside investigator do it. So that was why her name appears. And then the rest of the the people probably, you know, are self explanatory as to why their names appear. I also reviewed thousands of documents in connection with this investigation. The documents came from a variety of sources. The documents included individuals contemporaneous notes of conversations that they had either in meetings or on telephone calls. They included telephone records, cell phone records. They included correspondence and I I also received thousands and thousands of emails from the. Neshoba Regional School District IT Department that I reviewed in order to. Try to create a timeline and corroborate or contradict. Anything that that was being told to me by the witnesses. In terms of policies, I detailed in the report, the the various policies that I've reviewed. And, you know, in very short form, you know, what my takeaway was from those policies in terms of, you know, whether it impacts. This case in some way, or whether I felt that there were anomalies. And I'll touch on some of those at the end when I talk about my recommendations and and my summary. I also reviewed legal authorities. There were, there's, you know, obviously a lot of conversation about. MGL Chapter one nineteen, Section fifty one A, commonly known as fifty one A. So I reviewed that carefully, I reviewed, you know, any legal authority interpreting that. I talked to a lot of mandated reporters about how they manage their responsibilities under fifty one A. I also took a look at the bullying statute. I looked at. Aspects of Title Nine and the accompanying regulations. And various criminal statutes that came into play regarding this case regarding pornography. And and dissemination of materials harmful to minors. So those were, those were the various kinds of documents that I looked at. So. That was, that was how I conducted the investigation and so, you know, based on looking at all of these things, assessing the credibility of witnesses. And, you know, comparing, you know, the what the different witnesses said and how it all fit together. I made some findings of fact. I'm not going to read them to you, but basically I've I've sort of summarized them. In the in the executive summary and there's a more detailed. Explication of that in the full report. But basically what happened in this case was that. A student who I referred to as Student A. Saw photographs on the cellphone of Student B. Who is another another student now, you know, I've used the term student. To refer, you know, mainly in this case to. Former students who had already graduated from high school. Some of them were minors and some of them had reached adulthood, you know. To the extent that becoming eighteen makes one an adult. So. So the so student, Student A. Learned of these photographs, saw these photographs. Spoke, ultimately spoke to a parent. Student A had a plan to. To bring this forward to a trusted teacher. The parent decided to go a different route. And brought the information to Mr. D. Dominico, the principal of the high school. So. That happened in the context of a telephone conversation. The principal requested of the parent who have called Parent A. To speak with Student A. And. He did so. He spoke to Student A. Learned the information that Student A had, which was that, you know, the information about the nude photographs. On the phone of Student B. And, you know, also learned about a ride being given to a student who have called Student C. And that there may have been sexual contact between Veraca and Student C on that ride. So. At that point. There were, there, you know, there were at various points during. Mr. D. Dominico's receipt of information from the various individuals, parent A and student A. A point in time when Mr. D. Dominico reached out to the HR director, reported that this parent had. Come forth with the information that. The student had seen. The phone of another student and had seen the photographs. At that point, you know, that that was on a Friday. At that point, the principal reached out to. Student B and Student C, who were the two students who were named by Student A. As, you know, being participants in this and in the sense of having. B having received photographs and C having received a ride. And. Left messages on their home phones and also sent them emails on the school email. At that point, Student B did return the call to the principal. And the principal and Student B arranged to meet on Monday around lunchtime. This was, this meeting was made on Friday. Student C never responded to either the email or the phone call. And and Student C. Never did respond and and there was no follow up with Student C. On Monday, which I believe is the twenty fourth. Of June, Student B did not show up for the meeting with the principal. At that point. There was no follow up with Student B. Subsequently. The principal spoke with the HR director, indicated that the students were not getting back to him. The HR director questioned whether he had done everything he could to find out about the nude photos. He indicated that he had. And so the HR director. It counseled him that his next step would be to arrange a meeting with the teacher. Including union representation and that's, that's what happened next. So. There was a meeting with the teacher. And the principal and the HR director and. The union representative and that meeting occurred on June twenty seventh. And, you know, at the meeting, there were, you know, questions were asked about. Giving rides to students, questions were asked about nude photographs. And the responses, you know, were essentially that there were no nude photographs. That the teacher did admit giving rides to students. And talked about, you know, there were some questions about, you know, how frequently it occurred. And, you know, the report was that this teacher admitted giving. Rides to students on two occasions in the prior year and on two occasions in the then current year, which was two thousand nineteen. And. The question regarding the the nude photos was was answered. Basically with the teacher stating that. She had handed her phone to students so they could key in their. Address on a navigation app. And she believes that they may have accessed her Snapchat account. Potentially seen pictures of her at the beach with her family in a bathing suit. And that they may have sent pictures from her phone to other students. So that was the. The total amount of information that was gleaned from. From Ms. Veraca during that meeting. So what what occurred then was. That's the twenty seventh, on the twenty eighth. The principal went on vacation and at that same time, the superintendent returned to the US from Canada. She had been away during this whole period of time from the eighteenth. Through the the twenty seventh, she returned on the twenty eighth. At that point, the HR director and the principal were proceeding under the. On the basis that the allegation regarding the ride that essentially that. The the teacher gave rides to students who may be intoxicated in order to prevent them from drinking. That was the allegation that was being moved forward as a disciplinary matter. And. You know, based on the conversations between the principal and the HR director. The principal reported that he, you know, could not substantiate any other allegations. So. The briefing that was given to the superintendent on the twenty eighth was regarding the rides. And then shortly thereafter. The superintendent and the assistant superintendent were at. The the MAS superintendent's conference on the Cape. During that period of time, Mr. D. Dominico returned from vacation. There were a number of conversations among. Counsel, the superintendent, Ms. Stoica and Mr. D. Dominico during July as to what would be. The appropriate punishment for giving rides to students under that, under those circumstances. And so, you know, I detailed that in the report, but essentially. There was, there was some suggestion that there might be a suspension. There was a pushback from the union representation. And ultimately what was provided was the letter of reprimand, which was given in a meeting. Between. Ms. Veraca. The principal and the union representative. And I believe that. Ms. Stoica was not at that meeting. There was a period of time. Where she was, she was out so that, so she was. Where she was, uh, she was out, uh, so that, so she was not part of that. So. So as of August sixth, was it, which is the date that, that, um, that meeting happened to give her the letter of reprimand. That was essentially the end of the, um. The situation regarding Dorothy Veraca, um, in terms of that discipline that started with the June. Allegations brought forth by parent A. Um, in September, um, parent A learned that, um, Ms. Veraca was still teaching in the school district. And she called the principal and inquired whether that was the case. The principal told her that it, that it was the case, that the information, um, she had provided had been investigated to its. You know, as far as it could be, uh, confirmed and that action had been taken and that he couldn't speak with her. About it in detail because it was a personnel matter. So that was, uh, the. Impetus for, uh, parent A to ultimately go, um, to the Bolton Police Department and report. This situation involving the photos, um, and that was what, uh, led to, um. The, the, the various police departments involved commencing the investigation. So. From that point, um, that, so that occurred, the, um. Parent A went into the Bolton Police Department on September twentieth. And there was an initial investigation, um, and then the Lancaster Police Department took over the investigation. Uh, and, um. Contacted, um, the parents of student B. Um, and that happened, um, around September twenty fifth of twenty nineteen. Student B was interviewed, um, at what's called a sane interview on September twenty seven, twenty nineteen. Um, now, on that date, uh. The superintendent spoke with both, um, the police chief of. Uh, of the Bolton Police Department and a lieutenant at the Lancaster Police Department. Um, the Bolton Police Chief, um, telephoned the superintendent. Superintendent was out of district, um, they're both on, on their cell phones, uh, and. The chief told the superintendent that, um, he was in possession of information to suggest that. A teacher had sent nude photos to a student, um, and that the principal had been made aware of, um. Of those nude photos, um, back in June. So. At that point, um. The superintendent spoke with, uh, with the Lancaster PD, um, the main. Thrust of what, what they're trying to do at that point in, or in and around September twenty seventh was to make sure that. The teacher was placed on administrative leave and that there was going to be no contact between the teacher, um, and students. Uh, so there was, there were conversations between the superintendent and the various police departments to ensure that. The police departments were, you know, comfortable with the process that the school district was following. To, you know, notify the teacher that this was happening, um, and that the teacher was going to be on leave. Um, the school, the, 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 uh, police departments were concerned. And wanted to know whether she might be in contact with students over the weekend through coaching or some other, um, responsibility. And, um, it was confirmed that she would not be. Uh, so she was placed on leave on that Sunday, um, which would have been September twenty ninth, uh, twenty nineteen. So. At that point. It was recommended both by, uh, the, the police departments and by the school district's attorney, um, that. And in turn, the internal investigation essentially be opened, um, in addition to the police investigation. And the internal investigation at that point was to get confirmation. Um, of, you know, whatever conduct the district could get confirmation of further to, um. You know, potentially dismissing Barack from employment. So that investigation. Um, was done by the principal and in order to do it, he contacted, um, student B, um, initially contacting. Um, student B's parents to, you know, essentially, um. Trace the information that had been provided by the police reports, uh, and. Get it, you know, in a more direct fashion from the parents and the student. So that happened in early October of twenty nineteen. And then, uh, so the, the principal met on the third with the parents and then. Met or spoke by phone with student B on, uh, the fourth of October. Uh, and then on that date, um. The principal made a fifty-one A report to DCF, uh, regarding the information that, uh, had been provided by the parents and the student. Which confirmed essentially, uh, what the, uh, the police had come forth with. In their investigation at the end of September. So, um. Around that same time, there was, uh, the, this affidavit came out. Which was an affidavit filed by the Lancaster Police Department. In order to obtain a search warrant. And the search warrant was to search, um, district-owned equipment, um, in the possession of Rocka to search for Rocka's home and also. To, uh, the search, um, district-owned databases to determine, um, what types of communications have been going on. Between the teacher and the student. So. So that was, um, early October of twenty nineteen. Because that search warrant affidavit was filed, um, on October second. So it would have come to the school district, you know, some, some days after that, I don't have the exact, uh, date of that. So. What occurred next was, uh, there was, um, a disciplinary process commenced with regard to Ms. Veraca. On October fifteenth, um, Ms. Doika, uh, this is actually when, when she was out. For, you know, on a, on a personal leave, um, due to a, uh, passing of a close family member. She returned just prior to the, the pre-disciplinary interview and she conducted that interview with, um, Ms. Veraca. And Ms. Veraca was represented, um, by her union representative. The questions were drawn from the information that had been developed intermo- internally and also through the police reports. You know, relative to the allegations being made in the criminal case. At that interview, um, Ms. Veraca, through her, her union representative declined to answer any questions. Basically saying that her attorney had advised her not to respond. At that point, the district, um, as it's entitled to do in a civil matter, drew an adverse inference and, uh. Determined that, um, you know, she had engaged in the conduct. That she was being accused of. And, uh, on October seventeenth, an issue, a notice of, uh, intent to dismiss was issued. Um, to which, essentially she did not respond and the dismissal was finalized in, um, in the early part of November. So internally, uh. You know, the conversations were about, um. You know, getting, uh, Ms. Verac on leave, terminating Ms. Veraca, um, and then at some point, uh. At the end of October, uh. The masslive.com article came out. And, uh. That was based on the information in the affidavit. So. It was, there were about seven days between that date and the date that, um, Mr. D. Domenico was, was, uh. Started his administrative leave. It didn't appear that, uh, there was. A detailed conversation in which, uh, Mr. D. Domenico related, uh, the, the allegations that came forth in June. And, uh, you know, at, at the point that he was placed on leave, um, there weren't any further conversations. Because I, I believe, and based on the information that I have, um, the district was expecting to conduct. You know, some kind of an external review. And so. They were, uh, you know, waiting for that to occur in order to get, um, his take on. What occurred in, in the wake of, uh. Of the mass live article and, uh, and the information that was highlighted in that article. So. Those, uh, you know, in, in a nutshell, and I, you know, I've sort of hit the highlights, um, but, you know. That is essentially what I found in terms of, of the factual information, uh, that I was exposed to from, from the various sources. I did receive three contacts in response to the invitation. To, uh, you know, for community members to step forward and provide information. And I've, I've outlined those, those contacts, um, in, in the analysis section, um. Essentially, you know, none of them provided me with, um, any additional information regarding what administrators knew. In June and July and August, um, there were some. You know, there were some questioning about what people knew and the order in which people knew things in, you know, September, October. And early November, um, but. All of it dealt essentially with, um, information that was, um. That sort of came out or was known or was discussed after the teacher had already been placed on leave and then. Ultimately was dismissed. So, um, I didn't find that there was, uh. A lot of actionable information, um, coming from the community. So, and I've, I've detailed those items in the report. So with respect to the principal's investigation, um, I. I gave an opinion based on my experience as a school lawyer and as an investigator over the course of thirty years. And so the concerns that I had with the investigation that, that was done. Fell into, uh, a few different categories. Um, one of them was documentation. I was concerned that there was no reliable documentation about what was said in the various, um, contacts. That the principal had with parent A and student A. And there was, there was not a lot of great documentation even about the information that was gleaned from. The interview of the teacher. Um, so that was, that was an area of concern. There was no follow up with the students after the initial contact failed. The, the, uh, the message that was, that, that was put out by the principal. In the wake of this initial investigation was that the students had moved on and weren't interested in being. Part of this, weren't interested in giving him information. Um, but the reality is that he. Attempted to contact three students and he succeeded in contacting two of them. One of them he spoke to and, and, and that's, and student A provided him the information. Student B actually called, uh, back. And they set up a meeting which didn't end up happening, but, um, there was every reason to believe that student B could have been. Recontacted and re-engaged in order to provide information either on the phone or in a further meeting. Um, and there was no attempt to contact student C. I think, uh, that, you know, there was that initial contact, but there was no attempt to re-contact. In my opinion, it wasn't reasonable, um, to, to assume that, you know, that students would not. Return his calls if, if, uh, if he had made them. Um, and there were other students who had been identified by student A as also being recipient witnesses and those students were not contacted either. So. That was, that was problematic, that, so the nuts and bolts of the investigation were, uh, were lacking. Lack of follow up. Also, um, lack of sufficient development of the investigation prior to interviewing the teacher. So best practice is to. Learn as much as you can before you talk to the person who's accused of misconduct so that you can challenge their assertions. So that, that was, you know, wasn't done. There were some concerns, uh. You know, the, the principal. Was asking questions of the teacher, some of the questions, um, were certainly appropriate questions. But it was, the, the concern is that there were questions that weren't asked. The teacher was not asked to identify students that were, um, allegedly given rides. The teacher was not asked. You know, to identify students who, um, you know, the teacher had reached out to, um, prior to the interview. And there was no follow up, um, after that interview to determine, you know, whether. Uh, any or all of which he said was truthful. And so that, you know, that sort of goes hand in hand with not asking the questions about the, uh, you know, the students who were involved. And then the final area was, was kind of the write-up of the investigation. You know. At a minimum, you want some kind of, uh, documentation of the interviews and of the information you received, but, you know. Best practice again is to, when the, when the investigation is concluded. You have some kind of a written summary of what was done in the investigation, what wasn't done, why it wasn't done. Um, and what the findings were in the investigation. In this case, you know, trying to figure out what the findings were, you know, was a complicated process. And, you know, involved asking people to remember, you know, what they knew in June and, and what they thought in June and, uh. You know, and that's, that could have been avoided, um, with a better investigation write-up. So those are, those are kind of the key points. My key findings i- in terms of my analysis of the investigation. So the next piece, um, which I, I included, uh. In, in longer form in, in the summary was regarding Superintendent Clancy's knowledge of events. I did, uh, provide, uh, more of that information, uh, because Superintendent Clancy is the employee of the school committee. And so that's directly relevant to the school committee's, um, responsibility. Regarding employee relations and, and personnel matters. At least in the context that we're talking about. So, the way, um. The way this fell out was, there was a little bit of a perfect storm of mutual unavailability. Superintendent Clancy, a- after, you know, on, after the last day of school, um, took a vacation to Canada. Um, and she was, uh, out of the country in Canada, um, from June eighteenth, I believe, until. Um, June twenty eighth. And then on June twenty eighth, um, the principal, Mr. D. Domenico, went on vacation and he was out of his office until, uh, July eighth. And then, um. During that same period of time, um, Superintendent Clancy went to the, the superintendent's conference. So there was. There was no face-to-face, uh, meeting, you know, between the superintendent and the principal until mid-July and that was. You know, that wasn't anyone's fault. It was just a, a fact in the investigation that, um, that sort of drove. Some of the, the lack of, uh. Of information, I believe. The, the first information that Superintendent Clancy received about this matter, um, about the, the initial reports in June. Was a briefing from the HR director, uh, at the end of June on, uh, on June twenty eighth. And that briefing, um, by the account of both people that were in it, um, was about. The teacher giving rides to students, um, late at night, um, who may be intoxicated. Um, and so Superintendent Clancy's, uh, initial understanding of this event was, was that that was. The, the, what, what the investigation had, had concluded. And so there was not other information that was provided to her at that point. Now, shortly after that, she went to the Cape and was, um, at a conference with, um. Dr. McGuire, uh, the assistant superintendent, uh, and at that conference, um. Based on my interview with Mr. McGuire or Dr. McGuire, um. The superintendent, um. Told the assistant superintendent about this case and she told it to him in terms of. Um, a teacher giving rides to students, uh, and. you know, based on my, you know, my interviews of a number of the witnesses, my interviews of Dr. McGuire, my interviews of Superintendent Clancy and my interviews of, you know, various administrators and other employees of the district. My sense was that first of all, that if Superintendent Clancy had been aware of nude photos, that she would have talked to Dr. McGuire about it. And that if Dr. McGuire had been aware of nude photos, that he would have inserted himself into the situation, which is what he told me he would have done. And, and I found that to be credible, you know, based upon my investigation. So so at that point, at least as of the MASSS conference, Superintendent Clancy's awareness of this matter involved the teacher giving rides to students late at night who may be intoxicated, the students may be intoxicated. So the next sort of phase where I have individuals speaking with Superintendent Clancy is around the time of the police investigation. I found that the first time she learned about nude photos was on September 27th, 2019. And the reason I found that was because there are a lot of facts that, you know, connected to that date. I was told by the, the Bolton Police Chief that he placed a phone call to Superintendent Clancy at a time when she was out of the district in Tennessee. In my interview with Superintendent Clancy, I learned that she had given her husband tickets to a Carrie Underwood concert in Nashville, Tennessee, which was on that date. My conversation with, with Lieutenant Moody of the Lancaster Police Department indicated that he had a phone conversation with Superintendent Clancy on September 27th. All of those who spoke with the superintendent, particularly the two police witnesses who spoke with the superintendent on that date, reported to me that she was shocked by the information that the teacher had provided nude photographs to a student. In the conversation with the police chief, she had to have the chief spell. Well, there, I mean, there were some, there were some discrepancies, you know, minor, I think, variances. He said naked, she said nude. But in, in either event, the word had to be spelled. And so, and, and the information had to be repeated three times. And so I took it from, from all of that, as well as her own testimony, her own sworn testimony that her first information regarding nude photographs was on that date. So, and, you know, and then the, the, the things that flowed from that, placing the teacher on administrative leave occurred, you know, within, within days of that over the weekend. But a number of conversations within the district and to prepare for that and to, you know, cut off her access to, you know, district resources and so forth, all of those things were happening, you know, in the, in the hours following, you know, when she learned of, you know, this information on telephone call, on telephone calls on September 27th. So that, so, you know, for, for all of these reasons and, and a, a number of reasons, you know, that I was able to glean from the facts, I found that that was her first knowledge of that information. So the next, so, so at that point in time, she was, she, you know, she reacted to that, that knowledge. And it was shortly after the beginning of October when she learned of the contents of the affidavit. And she also had conversations with DCF. Now, DCF was involved in the case starting on September 25th, when they received a 51A report from the Lancaster Police Department, or maybe it was the Bolton Police Department. I believe it was the Bolton Police Department. And then they received a 51A report from the district on October 4th. So there was, there were conversations between DCF and Superintendent Clancy. And at that point in time, Superintendent Clancy's belief was that the principal had not been made aware of anything other than the rides. So when she learned, or when she was asked about, you know, whether he was aware of nude photos, or whether a parent reported nude photos to him, her response was no. And then she spoke with Principal DiDomenico and, and related that conversation and said, you know, this is what I told DCF. And the principal told her, well, actually, there was some conversation about photos, but the conversation about photos was the, you know, essentially he related the story that Dorothy Veraca had related, which was that students may have seen photos of her at the beach wearing a bathing suit and that students may have sent photos using her phone. So that was the, the sum total of what was then related to the superintendent about the photo allegation. So the, so then, you know, you know, in, in my report, I do say that I, I, I found it puzzling that there was a, a sort of a more searching inquiry into that in terms of the details of what happened in June. But given, you know, everything that was going on, my finding is that there wasn't. And so the, the next, you know, sort of big event was the mass live article. At that point, you know, there was, you know, having, having been involved in, you know, in, in various, you know, sort of high-profile cases. I mean, there was a media frenzy around that article. And so that was the, what was consuming a lot of the attention of Central Office. And I know that there was a reference to that in the comments, but essentially it's that, that wouldn't be surprising that, that a school district would be attempting to push information out in response to inquiries in, in that situation. So at that point, not long after that, the principal's administrative leave began on November 7th. And the, the process between there and here, you know, has been described by the, the school committee chair. So that, so, so the bottom line with respect to the superintendent's knowledge was that, you know, her knowledge, you know, pre-end of September was limited to the issue of, of giving the rides. And then post-September, she knew that the photos were in play. And she knew that there was an allegation out there that the principal had received this information in June, but she didn't believe the allegation. And her attempt to address it with the principal, you know, didn't result in, in her getting that information. So that was, that, those are my findings with respect to what the superintendent was aware of. The next piece of this that I looked at in terms of analysis was mandatory reporting requirements. So in, in reviewing the, the information, there were really two external sources, sort of non-policy-based sources of reporting requirement. One of them obviously is chapter 119, section 51A of the Mass General Laws. And the other one is a memorandum of understanding between the town of Bolton Police Department and the school district, which requires certain things to be reported. So, you know, the, the important thing, and I know a lot of folks have weighed in and opined on the, the standard for, for filing a 51A report. I think the important thing to understand with 51A reporting is that there are a couple of different levels to it. One level is reports that are legally required. Another level are, you know, reports that, you know, should be made based on sort of best practice, best professional practice of mandated reporters. And kind of the third level are reports that could be made, you know, that won't, you know, get you in trouble if you make them in the sense that, you know, you can't be prosecuted, you know, for making a report, you know, that, that you make in good faith, even if the basis for making that report is suspect. So you know, in looking at what are the, you know, what are the things that, you know, could have been reported or should have been reported? I looked both at is sufficient to meet your reporting obligation and it's the top person in the organization, if they've received that report, who is required to make the report. So with respect to the superintendent, you know, the three things that I looked at were an exchange of nude photographs between Veraca and student B. Veraca providing rides to, to graduated seniors after parties. And Veraca providing alcohol to minors, which was one of the, which was an allegation that was surfaced in one of the community comments. And I've addressed, you know, what my findings were on that. So I, I found that, that providing alcohol to minors was not an allegation in the case in, in any real sense. So that one was resolved pretty simply. With respect to an exchange of nude photographs between Veraca and student B, I found that her knowledge of that did not occur until after the matter had been reported to the, the police and that, you know, as soon as the, the district internally did an investigation, the district made its own report on October 4th. So I'm, you know, I think the, the superintendent, the superintendent's obligations with respect to those were met. There was a suggestion made by one of the witnesses I spoke with that Veraca providing rides to graduated seniors after parties could implicate a 51A obligation to report. You know, in, in essence, I, I talk about it in, in the report, but I, I found that that giving a ride was not conduct that, that implicated 51A. The information, as it was understood by the superintendent, you know, did not include anything sexual in connection with the ride. So that was, you know, that plus, you know, some of the other more technical aspects of the statute in terms of who, you know, who is someone in the care, you know, who is in the care of whom for the purposes of the statute. And, you know, these students' status as no longer being students of the high school. All of those things, you know, independently and collectively call the reportability of that situation into question. So I, I look a lawyer, I look at things from a legal perspective. I didn't find that there was a violation of the MOU based on not reporting that information to the police as understood by the superintendent. The, the required reports by the principal, I think, you know, presents more of a nuanced question. In terms of the, of the rides, the principal reported that information to the superintendent, so that wouldn't be, you know, within his knowledge, you know, or within his obligation to report if he reported it up the chain of command. You know, I think there's, there's some question as to, you know, if he had known, you know, more about the conduct, alleged conduct with student C, you know, would that have triggered a report? You know, one of the police witnesses I spoke to indicated that the police weren't interested in student C because student C was over the age of 18, actually over the age of 16. And it was in-person conduct, not, not photographs. So that was one of the, you know, one of the factors I looked at. So, you know, the, the, the other piece of this is, you know, I didn't investigate that what actually happened between Veraca and student C. Because, I mean, my, my reference was to look at what the administration knew and they clearly, that was information that would have been new to them under any reading of the facts. So you know, I, I knew everything I needed to know about what had been reported based on talking to the people, to the reporting parties. So the, the more nuanced question with regard to the principal is whether the information he had regarding nude photos was something that should have been reported, could have been reported or had to be reported under 51A. Where I came down on this was that, you know, it could have been reported and it should have been reported. You know, based on, on my reading of the statute, I didn't think that it violated the statute not to report it. You know, a lot of folks have suggested that just merely knowing of an allegation, regardless of how attenuated, and regardless of the, a level of detail, you know, is sufficient to trigger a 51A report. And that may be true when we talk about sort of the second and third levels of 51A reporting. Reports that you can make without, you know, getting in trouble for making a frivolous report and reports that you should make in, in the exercise of good judgment. And I think, you know, where I came down in my report was that those were both present, you know, that, that the situation was one that, that should have been reported and certainly could have been reported. But based on the information that he had, I found that he, he was not legally required to report it. And the, the difference between my view of 51A's requirements after talking to a number of mandated reporters is that you don't just take sort of an unsourced allegation or, or an attenuated allegation without doing further investigation to at least determine the, that there's some probability that it's true, that there's some reason. So the reasonable cause to believe is the word, are the words in the statute. And, you know, I think, you know, this is a difficult one because I, I think he would have developed reasonable cause if he had done a better investigation. But I don't think he did a bad investigation, you know, with the intent of depriving himself of, of the knowledge. You know, I think he did a bad investigation because he did a bad investigation. So so that was where I came down on, on that. And I know that, you know, reasonable minds will differ. I just, I believe that the people that say he absolutely should have reported this, which I also say are, are not talking about the legal requirement to report. They're talking about the conventional wisdom about when you report conduct to DCF under 51A. So that is where I, I wound up on that. I think there, there was probably a requirement to report the information to the police department. And, you know, under the MOU. So I, I referenced that in the report and discussed that in the report. So in terms of conclusions, you know, my job in, in this investigation was to find out what happened to the best of my ability to find out, you know, who knew what and, and, and when. And so that's the information that I've, that I've presented. It's up to the school committee to determine in the first instance whether there's discipline applicable to the, the employee that it, that the school committee has cognizance over, which is the superintendent. And then beyond that, it's up to the superintendent of schools to determine whether there's disciplinary action that needs to be taken with respect to other employees of the school district, you know, who are referenced or not in the report. So, so that is the, the, the sort of the discipline piece. So I, I'm not really in that. In terms of, you know, looking at what went wrong here, how do the policies impact what happened in this case? You know, I went through in the report, talking about some of the policies and in, in terms of policy considerations. You know, my overriding belief is that, you know, having a different policy per se would not have made a difference in this case. But there are some anomalies and some, some areas where it would be helpful to have policies that require it would be helpful to have policies that require investigations. It would be helpful to ensure that the policies align in terms of which policies prohibit conduct, you know, protect students from conduct and which policies protect teachers from conduct. And there's a little bit of a mismatch in terms of the policies that, you know, provide for investigations of sexual harassment or discriminatory harassment, for example. And then the policies that provide for, you know, that prohibit bullying and cyberbullying and those don't exactly match up when we talk about students and we talk about the requirement to investigate. But, you know, having said that, I don't think the, the problems with the investigation stemmed from, you know, someone looking at a policy and deciding, oh, I don't have to investigate. You know, I think the, the policy piece is something that, that can and should be addressed, but it's not a critical piece of this. I mean, the, where this fell apart was in, in two places. One of them was in, in the principal not doing the investigation that should have been done. And then the second piece was in not documenting the investigation that was done. And the reason, I, I mean, I think those are two different things because, you know, even i- if the investigation that was done had been documented, then the allegations regarding the, the nude photos and the information that was brought forth by Perrin A and student A would have been written down somewhere in a way that could be reviewed and discussed in, in some of these subsequent reviews when the conversation was had about what to do. And I, you know, it, it's, it's really speculation to say what would have happened had that happened, but it certainly would have provided the district administrators up the chain with a second opportunity to review what investigation had been done. And then, you know, require further investigation if they deem that, that to be appropriate. So I think, you know, how I would sum that up is, is that, you know, the administrators in the district having a common language or a common lexicon around investigations and a common understanding of what an investigation, you know, should look like would have been helpful here and, and would be helpful in preventing this kind of situation in the future. And so that's, that's, you know, to, to a large degree, a training application, you know, that, that, you know, if all administrators were trained and, you know, there could be you know, some sort of a written protocol or policy or, or some kind of document in place that would let administrators be on the same page when it came to doing investigations, documenting, you know, what happened in investigations and then documenting, summarizing the investigation itself. And then, you know, when, when a situation arises, it's as simple as saying, let, let me read the investigation. And, you know, and go forward. You know, the other, the other piece of this is that, you know, a plug for bringing counsel in a little sooner. I think the, the investigation was done by the time counsel got involved and was, you know, presented as, okay, this is the situation, it's rides. And, you know, having counsel in, in earlier to say, this is the, this is what we're investigating. Are we overlooking anything? You know, that would have been, you know, that could have been a valuable tool to use in this case that might, you know, have led to you know, a different kind of investigation. And, you know, sort of less of an insular approach to one person, you know, focused on doing an investigation and maybe having blind spots or preconceptions about what the information is going to be that comes out of the investigation. So those are, you know, those are kind of the, the broad brush recommendations that I would have in terms of training that could be done. Obviously, you know, having a common understanding under fifty-one A of what gets mandatorily reported, there is policy within the district that has a pretty broad definition of what should be reported. So I don't know that, that the, that the policy is, is amiss, but you know, maybe the communication about that policy, you know, in the context of, you know, administration and, and, you know, receiving some of these, you know, these types of complaints could be enhanced. So that would be another area. So, you know, basically I, you know, this is the, the investigation I was tasked with conducting an investigation, advising the committee regarding the district's handling of those allegations that came forth to the principal. And, you know, what I found was that, in fact, allegations did come forth to the principal regarding nude photos. The principal didn't develop enough information to conclude that, that those photos existed. And I've detailed, you know, my concerns with, with that conclusion and, and how that manner, matter was handled. You know, through the process. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Let me just put it out there. I know that the committee did not see the report until March eleventh and was able to spend some time with it before Tim's presentation in executive session. After that executive session, all of the copies of the report were collected. So no one left there with a copy of the report. I know that having posted it last Friday gave folks perhaps an ability to peruse it again, to read it again. So I don't know that at this point, if there are other questions from the committee for Tim. So if you have additional questions, raise your hand and I will recognize you and you can unmute. Other questions? I know that, oh Elaine, unmute. Oh, you gotta unmute.
I know, I get it. Sorry. I have a question. Kathy, if we're going to talk about this later, feel free to stop me. Because, Tim, you just mentioned several recommendations for how we can have this not happen again. And I think that's actually the key piece to this because consequences for personnel are certainly important, but it's not going to stop that, that alone is not going to stop this from happening again. In fact, in the show, but we have a history of cycling through leaders and it feels like as a district, we're just not getting anywhere. So I think the system of checks and balances, all of which you sort of just mentioned as best practices are great. My question is, based on your expertise, how long should it take us to put this kind of package together and get everyone trained and implemented on it? And who should be doing that?
Good question.
I mean, in terms of the, you know, I think there's two, two pieces of this and one of them is investigation training and, and luckily that's sort of the, I think, the easiest and the one that, that could be accomplished the most quickly. You know, you know, your, your counsel can do that kind of training. You know, the, you know, training varies. In my experience, it, it varies. You know, it could be a full day, it could be a half day, it could be a couple of hours. And I think investigation training is important to do on a periodic basis because you have turnover in administration. You know, and people forget. But, you know, if you did, you know, a half day session, that's something that probably could be, you know, put together within the next, you know, you know, three or four weeks. I, I mean, in, in better times when you can actually have people in a room. You know, and obviously there wouldn't be a, a drive to do it before you can actually get all together in a building with students again, but but that's something that could be put together, you know, relatively quickly. It's something that could be done over the summer. And, you know, if you did refreshers, you know, every couple of years and make sure you, you wrap, you know, the new folks in. You know, you would have, you know, some sort of an ongoing, common understanding of what an investigation should look like. In terms of the policy stuff, I mean, I've, you know, I've sort of, you know, highlighted some, some issues. And I think, you know, if you're looking at policies just, you know, to draw out what they say about investigations, you know, it's, it's a little bit tedious. So there are a lot of policies. So that's something that you would look at doing, you know, possibly with your policy subcommittee over the course, you know, of a number of months. You know, the good news is I don't think, you know, having those policies exactly right is something that's going to make a big difference. You know, it's just something that, you know, will help people, you know, when they review the policies, it'll help reinforce, you know, some of the things that are covered in your investigation training.
Also Elaine?
Yep, thank you.
Other questions for Tim? Leah? Leah?
Hi. So I think that the one place where people are getting hung up, myself included, is the time period during which our superintendent was alerted by the police that the principal had perhaps been in possession of this information. But it seems like the principal then, when she finally did inquire, he played it down and continued to, not necessarily deceive, but maintain the status quo story. And so she continued to remain in the dark on that. But I think that what I'm wondering, and this is of course, as we move forward, how can we inspire in our leadership? I mean, they're a tight team. They need to work closely together. They need to trust one another and they need to get along. But at a certain point, I think that what people are struggling with is at what point do you start turning a critical eye to members of your own team? And say, is it possible that he's not doing something right? I guess, you know, we have decided that the principal, or excuse me, the superintendent did not know and therefore didn't necessarily engage in wrong, wrongdoing. And so you speak to the matter of discipline. So I'm under the impression that removal is not necessarily appropriate or wise. And therefore, what, what is there otherwise?
Are we talking about the superintendent?
The superintendent only because that's the only person who we're in charge of.
Right. Yeah. So I mean, I didn't, I, you know, I mean, I don't want to overstate this, but I mean, I don't make a recommendation about, you know, what action you should take regarding the superintendent. I mean, but I did, I mean, I made the, the factual findings that I made regarding her level of knowledge and it doesn't appear that she knew, you know, the information, you know, that she would have, you know, needed to know at a time to do anything differently than what she did. The, at least relative to the nude photos. The, you know, I, I think, I think the answer, I mean, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to sound like a broken record coming back to the documentation, but you know, as, as Mike will attest, what employment lawyers do is talk about documentation a lot. And I think, you know, when, when an investigation is properly documented, you no longer have to trust the word of the person who is telling you what the investigation found. You have a written document which explains what the investigation found. And, you know, I don't, I don't think that, you know, there was an active attempt to cover up wrongdoing on the part of the principal. I think, you know, he did the investigation he did. He came up with the conclusions he came up with and that sort of became the, you know, the way this issue was being looked at within the district over the course of the months that followed. So it just sort of became, you know, you know, baked into, you know, the facts, the common understanding of the facts that this was a teacher who had given rides to students and that was the, sort of the, the sum total of the conduct, you know. It, I had the luxury of going back to the beginning and talking to the actual people that walked in or, or that called in. And, and so, you know, always in the forefront of my investigation were the actual allegations that came forth. But, you know, I think in, in some ways, you know, both individually, the principal and organizationally, the district, you know, forgot about those allegations, you know, to the extent, you know, any of them ever knew about them. And, you know, treated this as, you know, being about the rides because the, the, you know, the over, sort of the overriding sense that I received from, you know, people in the administration, you know, about how they looked at this, you know, during the fall was really, you know, or, you know, the summer into the, into the fall before the police report came out and even after, was that what happened in June was something completely different than what happened in September. So that the information that, that, you know, they were treating that as two separate events, even though my investigation sort of demonstrates that they were part of the same course of conduct from start to finish in terms of, you know, the information coming into the district. So, you know, that's, you know, I, I think having a documented investigation would have prevented that from happening because you could, you could always go back to the beginning and see what was the information that came in. And that's, that's what was lacking in this whole situation.
Other questions for Tim? Um, Mike? Mike Kors?
Yep. So I'm wondering, and I don't, I am not sure, you know, this is sort of a murky topic because our purview is with regard to the superintendent and yet there are personnel questions. So my question is, my first question, I guess, is focusing on a personnel question or, or maybe a role question. And I'm wondering if someone can further detail the responsibilities of a human resources manager in this instance and in the capacity as a human resources manager, would the employee serve as a check to a district employee in this case? Would be expected or not be expected to redirect an employee to, to perform a more extensive investigation?
Yeah. I mean, the, the role of an HR director is going to, you know, varies a little bit from organization to organization. There's really no, you know, sort of hard and fast, written in stone guidance on what that should look like. What I, you know, what I tried to do in this case was to try to, to discern what the role of the HR director was in this organization. And the best I could, I could discern is that the role of the HR director is to sort of be, you know, a consultant or you know, an expert when it comes to employee relations matters. But not necessarily an expert on, you know, everything that's involved in being a principal, you know, particularly when it comes to dealing with students and parents. So, you know, there may be, you know, organizations where HR directors are more, you know, directive towards other administrators, but it didn't strike me and, and in most districts, I think it would be unusual for an HR director to have a lot of, you know, authority to direct the activities of a principal. You know, principals have their own kind of statutory, you know, place in the, in the, in the firmament. And, you know, sort of along with superintendents wield their own authority vis a vis employees and, and students. And they're the ones, the kind of the go-to people to run the point when it comes to dealing with student and parent issues, you know, for a particular school. So, you know, while an HR director, and in this case, the HR director could say, you know, provide advice to a principal, it wouldn't have been the responsibility or the, or really even the proper role of the HR director to, to tell a principal what to do.
So if I could, am I still on audio?
Yep, go ahead, Mike.
So just as a follow-up, Mr. Norris, do you, do you think that as a district employee, the human resources manager had as of, I guess, late June of two thousand nineteen, reasonable cause to believe that a report to the Bolton Police should be made under the Bolton, the Shova MOU?
I mean, I, you know, I, I don't, I mean, I don't think so. I mean, I didn't look, I didn't look at the reporting responsibilities of the HR director because nor- I mean, I don't think so. I mean, I didn't look, I didn't look at the reporting responsibilities of the HR director, because normally, you know, those are not mandated reporters. So, you know, the, the, I'd have to look more closely at who exactly is, is implicated. I think it's really just, it's, it's high school personnel. The superintendent signs it. It's not clear to me that the HR director would have specific responsibilities under the M O U. You know, what I found essentially was that, you know, while the HR director, you know, was provided with information about the allegations made by parent A, you know, the HR director was also told that the investigation had been taken, you know, as far as it could be taken, and that the, the allegations were unsubstantiated. So, I don't know, you know, one could speculate about, you know, what else, you know, the HR director could have done, but I think everyone I talked to agreed that the HR director would not be responsible for interviewing parents and students that, you know, providing the advice that she provided, you know, that this is the next step if you've done your investigation, you know, was what we would have expected.
Any other questions for Tim? Leah?
Kathy, just really quickly, point of order, are we gonna continue to discuss this? Are you asking us just for questions for Tim, or?
Just for questions for Tim. If there are additional questions, is there something else that you wanted to bring up?
Well, I just have other questions related to kind of what we plan on doing moving forward.
So if we could, we'll get, that's, that's part of the summary that I have. But right now, if anyone has any questions for Tim, this is a good time to ask. Mike?
I just want to, I also want to reiterate what you said at the outset, Kathy, that, that we only had a couple of hours prior to our meeting on the 11th to review this. We had our discussions with Mr. Norris, and then we haven't seen this since. So giving, giving us the time since Friday to review this allows, allows us to see this through perhaps a new lens. So I, I also don't want to monopolize questions, and I'm trying to provide opportunities for others to ask questions, but if there are no questions, I'll ask mine. So, I asked this question in the executive session, and I think that the answer provided some insight, and I'm wondering if you could provide us with some details about the presence of what I'm calling gaps in the chain of communication that maybe hindered the ability to establish more clarity than was otherwise gathered?
And you're asking, I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Norris, sorry.
Oh, yeah, I'm not sure I understand the question, sorry.
Sorry, so I, I'm wondering, I mean, there, there are, there are big time gaps. You know, I put together this timeline, there, there are substantial time gaps, particularly with regard to who knew what and when. And I wonder if there are gaps in the emails that you reviewed, or even in the phone records that might suggest that information was conveyed that was simply not recorded?
Oh, well, yeah, I mean, so the, you know, I, I think one of the, one of the, the areas that I felt was difficult to nail down were some of the, you know, some of the specific meetings. And, and some of the stuff, for example, stuff that I, I received from, from counsel, you know, is attorney-client privilege, so I didn't include it in this report, but, you know, there wasn't, there wasn't necessarily clear documentation of, you know, when certain meetings happened involving, you know, the administrative team. My understanding from a lot of sources is that, you know, the administrative team, you know, meaning, you know, the, the principals and the superintendent and the assistant superintendent had, you know, frequent contact. And the contact was, you know, often on the phone, it wouldn't necessarily, people don't necessarily take phone notes regarding, you know, phone calls, you know, within the administration. Superintendent Clunchy, you know, tended to visit the buildings quite frequently and would, you know, meet in person with, you know, principals and administrators in the various buildings. So, you know, those things are, you know, that's part of a leadership style, and it's, I'm, I'm not here to say that there's anything wrong with it. But, you know, by their nature, they're just not things that, that work out to be documented, so that I, you know, I can't say that, you know, with specificity, you know, when I have a couple of different accounts of a meeting that happened, when exactly it happened. You know, all I can do is, you know, through the emails and the calendars and so forth, you know, I can, I can make some broad assumptions about where people were, if they're down in the Cape, or if they're on vacation. If they had a vacation autoresponder on their email, or, you know, things like that. You know, there may be things in emails that suggest, you know, where people are and where they're going. But that, that I think as much as anything else accounts for the gaps. I don't think that there was anything particularly missing. You know, just that, that these, these communications were done in ways that just by their nature are not documented.
Other questions for Tim? Elaine?
Hi, you sort of half answered this question just now, but did, with anyone that you interviewed, did anyone give a rationale for why a written report, let's say of the investigation, since you already, you just sort of answered the question with regards to regular documentation? Why a written report of this investigation wasn't warranted or wasn't done?
Well, I mean, I guess one of the, you know, it sort of was part of my findings is that there, I didn't think that there was a a common understanding that, that, you know, that most investigations would result in that. So, you know, I think it was just, you know, people coming from different places in terms of what their training and education was around investigations. A lot of the people I talked to learned how to investigate from other people, you know, in, in the district or in previous districts. You know, they learned how to investigate kind of on the job. So there was no common sense or a common protocol that would lead everyone to have the expectation that there would be a report.
Okay, thank you.
Leah?
But Tim, can you just clarify for me, you believed, and I think that you concluded in the report, that the investigation was very quick. There really wasn't any investigation beyond him, the principal, putting in a couple of calls, but when the, when the, when student B had an appointment made for that Monday to come in and talk with the principal, didn't student B think it was for some other purpose?
Right, student B didn't know what it was for.
And so the, so there really wasn't, I can't tell that there was any investigation done, because he didn't talk to student B. Student B, I mean, he did, but not about anything relevant. He talked to student A briefly, but student A is hearsay, so what would you jot down there? So I feel like it's, it's, yes, documentation and training on that is important, but I think that there was a failure there to actually conduct the investigation, not just document it. Would you agree?
I do. I mean, I, I think that, I mean, I think a, a requirement or, or understanding or a sense that one is obligated to document an investigation helps to discipline us to do a better investigation. So I think those two things are related. You know, he did, you know, he, he spoke to parent A on the phone, he spoke to student A on the phone. I spoke to student A. I came up with a lot of documentation of that interview. There was a lot there. You know, so part of it was, you know, just that it was a, it was like an 11-minute phone call with student A. You know, in contrast, you know, I had, you know, a lot more minutes, hours spent getting information from student A. So, you know, I think the fact that, that, you know, you're gonna produce a report and that you're gonna put something down about what, what you said disciplines you to, to do a better and more thorough job. And so, you know, I agree that there wasn't a lot of investigation. You know, and I think, you know, one way around that is, is more, better protocols on investigation.
Leah?
Kathy, this is maybe more for you too, in, or Tim. So I don't know that there are specific policies that we could change necessarily around this concept of investigation, because we just follow the suggestions of our governing body, M A S C. So would this then drill down more to protocols? And would the school committee be in charge of that?
Yeah, well, a couple of things. I think that Tim has made us aware of the need to take a look at our policies, and I know that a recent meeting, we had some input from teachers relative to policies regarding sexual harassment versus regular harassment. So there's work to be, to be done there, and I will speak to that as we go on, but unless there is something, a specific question relative to Tim's investigation or findings, I'd like to hold on that. It is part of our next steps. But while we have Tim here, I'd like any questions for him relative to the work that he did. Anything else? Mike?
Yeah, so the superintendent consistently stated that during the month from when she first learned about the photos, that she didn't know the critical details of the investigation, some of which were also known to the human resources manager. And so I have two questions regarding that. The first one was, is there any professional responsibility by the building principal or the human resources manager in communicating their knowledge of the details and the events to the superintendent? Because after all, she was reporting to both the police and to DCF that she did not, not believe the, some of the, the allegations on the affidavit. And the second question was, was there any evidence that the superintendent took initiative to inquire further so that there wasn't this sense of not knowing, or, or feeling like maybe there was more to this that she wasn't privy to or aware of?
So, I mean, I think there is, you know, so based on the terms of your question, there's, there's absolutely a professional responsibility on the part of professionals, you know, to, to communicate, think, knowledge that they have. I think the issue in this case was, you know, was a question of who, what, what knowledge did they have? And, you know, leaving aside, you know, what I found about the quality of the investigation, if we assumed that, you know, that a, an adequate, that a proper investigation was done, and he still did not corroborate the allegations, that, that's sort of the place that they, that they got to. The principal in terms of, of how he, you know, where he ended up with his investigation, and the HR director in terms of what information she learned from the principal about his investigation. So, you know, that was kind of, that was what their knowledge was at that point. You know, whether, you know, so knowledge and, you know, having received an allegation about something are, are two different things. So I think if, you know, if they certainly, if they had knowledge, you know, of, of facts around the photographs, that they would have been duty-bound to report. I mean, I think the, you know, the superintendent did ask the principal, you know, or did, did relate the DCF conversation to the principal and, and got back something that didn't include the allegations that were made by parent A and student A. So, you know, and, and that's what, that was sort of the, the way that situation was being looked at. And, you know, so you know, the superintendent's perspective was that, you know, that maybe there was something, that's, maybe there was something different between, you know, the information initially received by the principal and the information received by the police.
Any other questions? Steve, do you have a question?
Yes. I've been listening, I've read it. I've been listening to this thing for well over an hour and a half tonight. And coming down to the baseline, it seems to me like, number one, the principal did a lousy job with the investigation. Number two, he never told anybody except the human resources director that some allegations had been made, but they had been unsubstantiated. And she was acting in a kind of consultant role, saying, okay, you've done, have you done everything you had? Or have you done everything you could? And he said yes. And number three, you don't know what you don't know. And this was the situation with the superintendent who until late September didn't know anything about the issue of the photographs. I mean, basically, this is where, where, where we are. I don't know what we're trying to do as far as splitting hairs or counting the number of angels on the head of a pin, but this is what it is. Number one, the principal did a lousy job. Number two, he never forwarded to the superintendent the idea that someone had made a claim that there were nude photographs. And that number three, as soon as the superintendent found out that there were issues of, of nude photographs, as well as the car trips. And let us remember that student A, B, and C were no law, as far as I understood, were no longer under the control of the principal, were no longer under the control of the school system, but, but basically had graduated and were now free and independent adults, as we like to call people who are 16, 17, and 18 years old. This is what, this is what we're, we're faced with. We have to make some changes in, in policy probably, and the, and the administration will have to take those policy changes and put them into some sort of protocol situation. But this is what it is. This is where we are. And we're, we're, we're dealing, we're, we're dealing with with this, with the situation that, that was, I won't want to say screwed up when we started, but it was not fully developed, and information was not passed along the line the way it should have been. And that's what, what we're dealing with now.
Any other questions or comments? Mike?
Is it okay to respond to Steve's comments?
No, I really, I, I think we've beaten this up. I think everybody's had their say. It's Steve's summary. I think that if a later date, we want to get into the discussion, I, I think that we're just, just prolonging it. But if you have a question for Tim or a summary statement that you want to make, Mike, please do that.
I'll just, I'll just say that as a summary statement, I think what's at the heart of this, and I, you know, I realize that this is, has taken some time. It's taken all of us time. I think at the heart of this is as a district, how we protect our children. And I don't think this is something that any of us ought to take lightly. And, you know, I'm prepared to, you know, figure this out and, and resolve this with a high degree of certainty for as long as we need to. And I think that this is, this is why we're here. This is why we're here. So if it's taking time, it's just going to take time. And these are the things, this is part of the process. So thank you.
Yes, you're right. And I, I think that if there is a, a perception out there that we do not take protecting and caring for our students seriously, then I'm going to say that's, that's a, a false assumption. I think that there was a breakdown in this area, and now we have to fix it. And we are all concerned about the safety and the safety and well-being of our students. They may, we may not have given birth to them, but they're our kids. And we will do that. Um, and it's part of the work that is before us, and we will give it the time and the effort that it needs. So this is not, this is, uh, uh, an end of an investigation, but it's not an end to the work that we have to do. It's the beginning of what we, we have to do. We may have accepted the findings of the report, but that doesn't indicate with, that we're complacent about what we, we saw. So, um, I, I do want, I have one more thing before I go into a summary, but I just wanna make sure that folks have had an opportunity to ask Tim any other questions while he's here. I'm gonna take that as we are ready to move on. Um, so, um, just before the meeting, um, I was, uh, Brooke forwarded me a statement from Paul D. Domenico and asked that I read it at this meeting. So I'm gonna read the statement from Mr. D. Domenico. First, I want to thank Superintendent Clancy for her leadership during this trying time in the district. I also want to thank Mr. Stephen Cullenane for providing stewardship to the high school during my absence. His love of Neshoba is boundless and evident. Great pain has been caused by the teacher's misconduct. I am sickened and saddened for her victim and his family. And I am sickened and saddened for the perpetrator's family and even the perpetrator herself. I pray that they are all getting the help they need to heal. And of course, I am sorry for the confusion, heavy-heartedness, and anger the students, staff, and families have felt during this difficult chapter. I take full responsibility for the shortcomings in my investigation last June. While I did not set out to conduct an inadequate investigation with the help of hindsight and Attorney Norris's investigation, I can see its shortcomings clearly. I am deeply sorry. As an educator for over twenty years, I tend to think the best of people and see the good in them. In this instance, that core belief is the general goodness, that core belief in the general goodness of people blinded me. When the allegations about this teacher were first brought to me, I took the matter seriously and acted immediately. However, I failed to maintain a healthy skeptic, skepticism, ask enough questions, or keep detailed notes. I accepted the teacher's explanation rather than think critically about what she was telling us. It boils down to the fact that I simply could not conceive that a mother of three, a solid teacher, and a person with a good reputation in the community could have engaged in this egregious misconduct, this criminal conduct. That was my blind spot. I am sorry for not recognizing it as such. Over the course of my career, I have certainly made my share of mistakes as any building administrator does. I have always reflected on my mistakes in an effort to learn from them and avoid repeating them. By reading and reflecting over the past months, I have learned valuable lessons about my response to the allegations. These lessons involve best practices when conducting investigations and how an investigator can recognize and correct for biases and blind spots upfront. Of course, I wish I had learned these good investigation techniques earlier in my career, but I can only move forward. As painful as this has been, I know I am a better administrating, administrator because of this experience. However, I believe it is in, it is best that I take what I have learned and apply it in another school. With this in mind, I have decided to tend to my resignation as principal of Neshoba, Neshoba Regional High School. I will be forever grateful for the opportunity to serve as the principal of Neshoba Regional High School. And I will miss you all, especially the students very much. I know the future holds great things for the students and the community. I have no doubt that under Superintendent Clancy's leadership, the district will be better for the lessons we have all learned from this difficult chapter. Sincerely, Paul D. Domenico. I'm not gonna answer any questions, uh, about it. I'm gonna turn this back over to the superintendent. Um, I don't have any details relative to, um, the resignation. And again, um, Superintendent Clancy will be working with that. And as there are details that are appropriate to share emerge, Superintendent Clancy will share them with the committee.
That's correct. Thank you. And we're working with, uh, with, um, Mike McCarroll on that as well as, uh, Mr. D. Domenico's lawyer.
Thank you. So in summary, um, and, and this was what we did in our executive session. After we heard from Tim, after we asked our questions, um, we voted to accept the report as presented. So we accepted the findings. And by accepting again, accepted in terms of, we recognize what it is telling us, and it is a call to action on our part. From the very beginning, we said that we have to look at what is in this report, the investigation, to determine next steps. And, and that's a big responsibility that we all now share. Uh, we also con- uh, concluded unanimously that the findings of the report indicate that Superintendent Clancy did not engage in misconduct. Now, while we concluded that the findings of the report indicated that to us, um, we still expect that the superintendent will work with the school committee to create a remediation plan to address the policy and training recommendations, um, put forth in that report. We have no details. I mean, when you think about it, we met the last time on March, um, well, we met on March eleventh, and then the world changed. And so we, we did not proceed with building, with, 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 um, business as usual. So we don't have any details as of yet. If you look at our calendar, we should be in the process of writing the superintendent's, um, evaluation. We haven't even begun that process yet. Um, but we expect that the specifics of the plan will be included in the superintendent's self-evaluation and, um, and articulated in her, um, the, the evaluation that we write about for her, and also in the district improvement plan. So while we have that as a broad, um, goal, the specifics have not yet been determined. So that's work left to do. And we can discuss it, um, at our upcoming meeting, the next one at the end of April. Um, so the other thing we did was vote to refer the full report to our attorney, uh, Mike McCarroll for further action. Um, as Attorney Norris pointed out, there were issues in that, in information in that report relative to personnel that is not, um, within the purview of the school committee. But I'll let, uh, Mike McCarroll speak about what that means, that we have turned the full report over to him for further actions.
Good evening. Yes, so as, uh, Attorney Norris, uh, indicated earlier tonight in his, uh, presentation, uh, there were levels of information, uh, in the various reports. Um, and, you know, there were three levels, as he indicated it. Uh, level one, uh, as I think he said, which is information that was told by certain people, uh, that he's kept to himself while he was doing his report. Uh, level two, concern, some concerned information regarding, uh, potential student and employees that are outside of, uh, the purview of the school committee. Uh, and then the level of detail which, uh, you got in your executive summary. Um, there is a longer, uh, report, uh, which he will send to me, uh, which does have, uh, further detail, uh, which really should be outside of, uh, your view and, and what I would say is the public's view in terms of potential information is there. Um, it doesn't change any of the conclusions, uh, and it doesn't change any of the recommendations that he's made. Um, I've sat here tonight and, and listened to, uh, his very thoughtful presentation and, and some guidance that he's given to the school committee. And, uh, I would be remiss if I didn't echo, uh, many of the sentiments that he's had about how the districts can uh, go forward from this, uh, and heal. I think, uh, training, uh, is, is one way that you certainly, uh, can do that and should do that. Uh, and policy developments, I think those are big things. And to kind of, uh, echo what the chair has said, uh, tonight, I really think this is, this is not an end to just getting this report tonight. Uh, this is a start of, uh, a journey to, to, to take some new actions, uh, and, and make sure things like this don't happen going forward.
Thank you, Mike. So in summary, um, this is the end of a long process. Um, and we have found out a lot of things about what happened in this specific situation. And we have learned a lot about ourselves as a, a, a community, um, a school community, as a, a school committee, as, as part of the larger district. So our next steps include looking at policies, making sure that if there are policies, there are protocols, uh, employees of the district who would engage in any kind of investigations dealing with discipline, whether that be, um, with people they supervise, or in the case of, of building administrators, with students. So this is the beginning of a process, not the end. We have a lot of information. We have a lot of work to do. And I think that a good place to start would be, um, having a, um, a, a, a session or an, um, agenda item at, um, an upcoming meeting to start to, to sort out the pieces of this and decide, um, what, what specific ne- next steps are. And then also to make sure the, the community is apprised of what we're doing and, and what our progress is. So, um, that's, I think that's all I have for tonight with regard, um, to this. I wanna thank, um, Tim Norris for the work that he has done, um, and for the thoroughness of the investigation. Um, I wanna thank, uh, Mike McCarroll, who has provided us with, with guidance and advice, and also the members of the committee for being so attentive to this and caring about this. Um, and I know we're all committed to, to making this better. It's, it's, um, the thing about, and we teach this to kids all the time, you learn from your mistakes, but you don't make the same mistake. You, you learn how to overcome it and move forward. The stakes are high in this. Nothing is more important to us than these students, than our students. Their education, of course, but their safety, the fact that they feel cared about. And there are some things that have already happened to change things, not gonna go into them here. But I think that we are moving in the right direction, and we will continue to do so. And we will continue to keep the community appraised of our efforts, our successes, and also, um, our missteps. So, um, I wanna thank Tim and Mike. Um, if there is no objection, I will excuse them from the meeting, and we will proceed with the rest of our agenda.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, um, what I would like to do in terms of the agenda, there are a couple of things that I think would be quick. And, um, so I'm going to go down to, um, under new business B, um, Student Opportunity Act, um, SOA. Brooke, do you wanna speak to that, or is that a Todd thing?
I'm actually gonna turn that over to Todd, and I think a couple of these things we can do quite quickly, um, Kathy, to, uh, to your message here. For example, I don't even really need to, um, focus at all tonight on the, the superintendent's update. We can just leave that as a, a read only tonight if you wanna do that, or if people have questions, that's fine. The SOA is, is probably a quick thing. So Todd, I'll turn it over to you, and you can, um, explain that we basically need their support tonight and exactly what the SOA is.
Sure. So thank you very much. Um, so the Student Opportunity Act is the, the plan that you have have for Neshoba. Uh, the goal of the Student Opportunity Act really is to make sure that districts, all districts in the Commonwealth are committing themselves to closing opportunity and achievement gaps for students, uh, really of color, uh, low-income students, English learners, and students with disabilities. Um, the state has identified a set of evidence-based programs or initiatives that were approved in November of 2019 that are considered to have a high impact on closing opportunity and achievement gaps, particularly with these subgroups of students. The purpose of the Student Opportunity Act really is to provide a short and succinct, as requested by the Department of Education, overview of which these programs we currently support or intend to support in our own district. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, too, has encouraged districts to commit to a small number of these high-impact evidence-based programs, close opportunity and achievement gaps among these student subgroups. So the Department of Education emphasizes that a completed student opportunity plan did not look and feel like a comprehensive strategic plan, or spell it a laundry list of priorities and initiatives. The Department of Education and our district values doing a few things very, very well. Um, so you have the Student Opportunity Plan Act Plan for Neshoba in front of you. Um, and it's, it's one thing that does need to be approved by the school committee. Um, and we can certainly speak to the elements in that plan. Um, unfortunately, with the circumstances, the way in which they are, there was a due date of April for this. And the Department of Education did indicate that we would be given, uh, a much-needed, an extension onto this. Um, however, that hasn't been passed yet. So districts are somewhat, um, scrambling to, um, their school committees to get these in front of them and get them approved. But we are told that there will be an extension. So if people are feeling as though they do need more time, et cetera, I understand that, but we certainly wanted to get this completed, finished, and in front of you, you folks, um, um, in an appropriate amount of time.
Um, can I hold the group to see if folks have had enough time to read it and are prepared um, to ask questions or vote about it, or do you need more time? Todd, do you have any sense of when the, the deadline would be?
They have not come through within a, a, a date yet. Um, the first date was April third, and we were told by, um, the commissioner in the Department of Education that we would get an extension, and they had filed that. But when April third came about, they had not received word yet from the state on that, but we're told that it was coming. So we've yet to receive what that date will be. Um, so the plan is complete. Um, you know, our final step is obviously bringing it to you folks, um, and getting approval for it.
Okay. But my question is to the group, are you prepared to do that? We're already past the deadline. Um, um, do people need more time to, to read it and to formulate questions? Leah? Leah?
Um, so Todd, are the, is, um, are these numbers, like one of them is supporting educators implement high-quality alignment? Are these things the ones that you kind of are just focusing on, or were these the mandated categories? Can you reiterate that?
Yeah, so there are, there are categories and or initiative or commitments, as they call them. And, you know, one being focusing on student subgroups, the second be, being using evidence-based programs to close those gaps. Um, and the third being monitoring success with outcome metrics and targets. And then the fourth really is about engaging the community and all families. So those are the four commitments within the Student Opportunity Act. And then within that, we as a district kind of, you know, take a look and explore what we are doing within all four of those. Um, I'll be, you know, very specific in letting you know that, you know, Neshoba is a district, we are one of the, you know, low-incidence districts in terms of having to turn in what is called a very short form and identify what we're currently doing because our levels of students, um, in those subgroups are so low. Um, so this is our plan moving forward for the next two years as we see it in terms of meeting, um, and closing those gaps with those students. But because our, our levels, um, of groupings are so low, um, we're only required to complete a short form, um, as opposed to other districts who might be, you know, far bigger in, in, in urban districts.
Any other questions?
Yeah, um, this, this is for twenty-one to twenty-three, it looks like on the top.
Correct. Well, y- yeah, yep.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so it'd be like, you know, fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-three. So it would be moving forward, you know, try next year and the following.
Um, the total cost of this looks significant. And I think it's something that we should, uh,
And I think it's something that we should, uh, Brooke is shaking her head no.
Yeah, I, it, that, that's not really how, that's really not how it works. This is basically things that are already going out. This is not all brand-new stuff that we have to do, Steve.
Correct.
These are things that we're already doing within the district. There is very little money, as, as Todd had pointed out. Uh, there's very little money attached to this at all, um, from either getting money from the state or us putting money out. This, this is almost like one of those boxes that we have to go check on right now with the, with the state. That's all this is.
So what we did was I, correct, what we did was identify those monies or the monies within our budgets that are currently funding those kinds of programs that we already offer in district to close those gaps. And what this student opportunity plan does do is then kind of help districts in giving them more money to support those programs. Just such a low-incidence district that we mo, we, we won't see much of anything from it at all. So what, but what we do need to do is provide the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education evidence that we are working to close those gaps, you know, as we've already identified in our district improvement plan. So it's, it's, those monies are already budgeted monies. And it's just to break down, uh, for you folks and the Department of Secondary and Elementary Education, what that money is, where it's going, and how it's closing those gaps for us.
Leah, did you have a question?
Yeah, I guess it's just with number, excuse me, number one, under Enhanced Core Instruction. It says that the early college programs, which I assume we already have implemented. So is that with QuinSig?
Yep.
Okay. So it says that we're trying to focus primarily on students who are underrepresented in higher education, but I would assume that the programs are available to any kid at Neshoba.
They certainly are available to any kid, but we're obviously demonstrating that, you know, we, there are outreach to all of our subgroups to participate in that kind of a program.
And so the only thing that I, just to Steve's point about money, it seems like you're reducing the cost for kids who perhaps qualify.
Okay.
Is that true?
I don't think so.
Cause a hundred dollars seems low.
Yeah. Which is, yeah, I don't know if Pat knows, has more information on that in terms of the funding of that.
So my question is, do we, this was supposed to be quick. And I, no, no, don't apologize. If folks want more time and we know we're going to have an extension, why don't we move it to the, um, what is it? What's the next meeting then? Right? A, April 22nd? Is that our next meeting? I have no idea. When is it?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay.
14, 22nd, yes.
Okay. So if we're not ready to vote and we need more time to think and ask questions, my suggestion would be that we send any questions to Todd and, and put it to a vote at the next meeting, um, unless folks are ready to vote right now or have questions. There are questions in my mind, things we want to know, and then things we need to know to make a decision. So where are we landing? Steve, I'm polling the committee.
I suggest we wait until the next meeting.
Leah? Leah, yes. Wait.
Yeah, wait.
Mary? Wait. Okay. Joe?
I'll defer to the majority.
Thank you. Brett?
Wait.
Okay. Elaine?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Waiting.
Steve, you're not Steve. You're the other Steve. You're Mike. You're Steve that is Mike. Mike Warren.
I'm okay waiting.
Waiting. Okay. So if we put it on the agenda for the next time, please, oh, Alita.
The next meeting on the calendar is May 6th.
Why would we, we have an April meeting, no?
No, it should be school vacation, so it's not on the calendar.
Well,
Make any difference. We can build, we can still be here.
Make a difference because you'll have to take the vote to add a meeting to the calendar.
All right. So is there any objection to adding a meeting on April 22nd?
No.
I'm seeing nobody that has plans, no vacation, nothing. I think we're all going to be wearing nice clothes on the top and jammies on the bottom yet again. All right. So if we, can we have a vote to, can I have a motion to schedule?
I move, I move that we schedule a, a, a meeting of the school committee on April 22nd.
I'll second that, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. All in favor, I'm going to do a roll call. Steve?
I.
Kathy? Yes. Leah?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes. And Mike?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, April 27th at 6 o'clock, and I would be, I would, I'm sorry, what, Mike?
22nd. I think you said 27th.
Oh, I'm sorry. 22nd. Um, and we may be zooming into that one. But we'll know when we get closer to that date. Okay. So, um, the other thing that I think will be quick, but I thought that about the student thing, is the donation for, um, Luther Burbank School. Uh, Elaine, do you want to read the motion?
Yes. I move to accept the gift donation in the amount of $922 to the Luther Burbank Middle School by a generous parent who has offered their payment of the cost of the Washington DC trip to help supplement the reimbursement amounts for all of the other eighth-grade families. Specifically, this gift will help to supplement the reimbursement amounts resulting from non-recoverable expenses due to the trip's cancellation.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second.
I think Brett beat you to it.
Okay.
Questions? Discussion? Okay, I'm calling the vote. Steve?
Yes.
Kathy? Yes. Leah?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item that should not take long is the approval of the Edgar Grant Book. Pat, could you speak to that briefly?
Sure. Um, I just want to reiterate what I said at two meetings ago. This is from the Federal Department of Education. And it's, there's a requirement in order for us to receive grant, federal grant funds, that we have a manual in place. And basically, all, I hope all of you have taken the time to read it. And it spells out what our processes are for procurement and, um, how they meet federal and state requirements. Does anybody have any questions?
I move, I move that we approve the Edgar Grant Book.
Second?
Second.
Questions? Discussion?
Move to vote.
Okay. Steve?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Leah? Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Joseph? Joseph?
You have to, Joseph, you, you, Joe, you need to unmute.
Unmute.
I'm sorry. Yes, I vote yes. I'm sorry.
You, Brett?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Um, hang on. Uh, Elaine, Mike?
Yes.
Okay.
And Brett?
Are they heard? You're the one.
Did Brett vote?
Yes, he did. Try to keep up, Steve. Jeez. Okay. Now we did that. Let's see. Um, let me see. So is there a bus contract update for?
Yeah, I can do that really quickly and Pat can jump in. And then I was thinking after the superintendent report, I, I spoke too soon. There are two things that we need to, to talk about in that superintendent report. So the bus contract right now update, just, just to give you a general flavor. And I know I sent a note around to you folks the other day, just kind of give you a flavor. So i- in essence, we were hoping that we would get something from the state that was, uh, relatively, uh, provided some level of continuity across the state for expectations with, uh, where we were all at with our bus contracts. And again, I would point out that we pointed out to the commissioner and, and, um, I, I certainly did with our, um, MESS executive director and, uh, one or two of our legislators, that my biggest concern is that people will resign from being a bus driver and take up another position. And then whenever we go to reopen our buildings, we won't have enough drivers across the Commonwealth, never mind, you know, Neshoba, to man these buses and move our children about. So I'm re, I'm really concerned about this. So we had a couple of meetings, Pat on it. In fact, I think last week, I think we had a meeting Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday on it. And then again, this, this week. And, uh, we have another one scheduled again tomorrow. There was a, one scheduled for today that didn't happen. Uh, so it's, it's taking, um, a lot of interest in it. And, and, and short, I think what's happened is the state has decided that maybe what we should be doing is looking at doing a, a type of renegotiation as regions. And so basically for us, it would be everybody else that's, that's dealing with D bus company right now would just basically do a renegotiation with them. Um, so the, uh, the whole group has been meeting, the superintendents have been meeting separately from the business managers. And then sometimes we're all collectively on that call. We've been on calls with the state, uh, with regards to this. And Jay Sullivan, uh, it's come up with the commissioner with, conference calls with him. So there's lots, certainly lots of interest. And we just haven't gotten to where I feel we need to be yet. As a result of the regional grouping that we're in, uh, three folks have come forward that are really, uh, taking the lead on this negotiation, the renegotiation. Um, I was hoping that we would have made progress, that I could have brought something for you, uh, tonight. That did, that hasn't happened yet. So keeping our fingers crossed that maybe they're meeting tomorrow. I know that they had reached out and had some communication with D bus. They both yesterday. Okay. So, uh, I, I think my message right now is that it's, it's ongoing. And as soon as we have something to bring forward, we'll, we'll bring it forward. Is that a quick snapshot? Pat, did I miss anything on that?
Yes. I just want you to know that it's, it's pretty big. There are 11 communities, or 11 school districts that, that use the bus. And, um, basically what they have us doing is looking at the cost of the contract per month. Because we're talking only maybe a, a month and a half or whatever, depending on when we go back, two months. Um, and we're going to renegotiate the rate for those two months, um, where we would pay less than the full contract, monthly contract play, the price, just to, uh, make sure that the drivers, are being continued to be paid. And as, um, as Superintendent Clancy said, maintain that they're in those positions so that we don't run into a situation where we don't have any kids to drive our buses. I mean, have any drivers to drive our kids rather. So.
And, and our understanding was that initially they were all, the, the drivers were laid off, but we understand that they have been called back. So that's where, that's where we left it at yesterday.
So, so does that mean they're getting paid if they were called back?
That would be our assumption. I, I don't think that anyone has told us that specifically, but I think that that was our assumption, that that's one of the reasons why they were called back.
I had some community concern expressed to me that about whether or not we were paying the bus company. My understanding is that, um, we have not been paying them.
That's correct.
They have not been driving. And so we, we only pay for services rendered. And there have been.
In, in this particular situation, that is the sticking point. You're absolutely right. And Pat was given very specific directions, um, by those folks who were above her and who said, no, you, you're not to pay them right now. And so that's one of the reasons.
The concern was that we were paying the bus company and the bus company wasn't driving our kids.
Right. And that's not true.
Okay.
No, that, that's not true. The only thing that they've been paid for is what they've actually done up until.
Okay. That's just, I wanted to make sure I was clear. Any questions about the bus situation? Joseph?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, I did have a quick question. And depending on the response from the superintendent, I just have a comment to make after that. Madam Superintendent, in your, uh, email communication, you indicated that through the renegotiation process with the, uh, transportation companies throughout the Commonwealth, that, that would possibly be some requirement of the district committee to take some vote or action in regards to what's renegotiated?
Yes. That's why I was saying we would be bringing back a, a new contract to you. That was what I was hoping we would have tonight, but we didn't have. So I'm hopeful now with this April 22nd meeting that we might have something by then, but no promises.
Okay. So my comment, Madam Chairman, would be this. And I, I received the same communications from the same institute parties in our town regarding, uh, bus service. And, um, I have in my possession a document that was sent out by the bus company to its drivers in regards to the, uh, uh, school closures during the, the pandemic. And in their memorandum to the, to the employees, they indicated that they were engaged in their due diligence and that they had reached out to appropriate state representatives and they were doing all they could to, you know, alleviate the situation. So my comment to this would be is that this is a situation where we're dealing with a for-profit corporation. And what they do is not a matter of public record. So if somewhere along the line, uh, you know, this is going to come before, and I'm saying this more, uh, for those who may be listening, and this is not directed at the superintendent or anything like that, for anybody who might be listening to this, especially at the bus company, that, you know, if this, if there is something that the district committee is going to have to do at some point in the near future as regards to the renegotiation and voting on this, I for one, and just one-eighth of this committee, would be, uh, extremely interested to hear exactly what the bus company has done as far as their due diligence. And if they have spoken to who the state representatives, who did they talk to? What was discussed? And what did the representatives decide they were going to do in this regard? Because right now, I'm looking at this memorandum and it says that they're not getting paid, the, uh, excuse me, the, the company is not getting paid. Ergo, the employees must, they go, uh, you know, going to have to go and get unemployment. And so now I'm hearing that the, the employee's been brought back and, uh, this chair has just presumed that they're getting paid. So it would really be helpful for me if I knew exactly what the bus company and the companies were doing in this regard.
I, I think that we can probably fill you in a little bit more on that. Some of the things that you've asked for, um, Joe, uh, have already been asked for by the, those people that are doing the negotiations. Uh, so that's the first thing I would say. The other thing is because things are changing so rapidly every day still on this, um, the, the small business, um, um, part of the, the stimulus package has now come out. And that I, I suspect that that may also be at play here as well. And I don't know how that dovetails in our own negotiations or renegotiations with this. So I think there's a number, there are a number of things at play. Uh, this is very, it's very complex.
Steve?
No, I was just going to say with the stimulus package, I bet that's why they've, uh, called them back. Because they have, the only way they can get the money is basically to have their employees hired and be paying them. And then they're going to be paying, you know, they're going to get reimbursed a certain amount for, based on payroll last year and all this, this other rigmarole that's in the process. But I bet that's why they were recalled.
Okay. Um, all right. Can we move on to a remote learning rollout?
Yep. Well, I'll turn that over to, uh, of course, Dr. McGuire's picture is gone right now. There he is. He's back. So let's just talk quickly, as quickly as we can, about the remote learning rollout from your perspective. And then Pat and Anne Marie, I'm also going to have you tap in at the end of his piece and talk about, uh, our, our other employers, our hourly employees.
Sure. So we rolled out our remote learning plan, um, in conjunction with the guidance from the Commissioner of Education and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education this Monday, April 6th, 2020. Um, that was the guidance that we received. Prior to that, we were offering, um, enrichment opportunities for all students until the governor then, um, declared that we would not be, uh, back in school until March, uh, May 4th, 2020. Uh, with that, um, you know, I, I have to give kudos to every single person in the NRSD community, the faculty, the teachers, my teaching and learning team, the principals, the assistant principals, this administration in terms of creating a remote learning plan for a district, uh, in a matter of a week's time. Uh, the amount of time and effort that people have put in, way above and beyond, um, all hours of the night to get this rolled out, be communicating with parents, community members, was a behemoth undertaking, to say the least. Um, you'll see our remote learning plan launched on Monday morning at 8:00 AM. That is a remote learning plan that has, uh, our grades three through 12, working within the Google Classroom. Uh, six through 12, as you know, are one-to-one with Chromebooks, so they are able to work from their devices, um, from home within the Google Classroom. And our elementary teachers K, and students K through two are working within the Seesaw platform, which is also an interactive online platform. Um, and we are also allowing for, um, video conferencing with students. Uh, we sought out a tremendous amount of legal guidance around that particular issue. And I will say that we were far ahead of the curve in terms of making sure we had all of the appropriate legal guidance as it related to video conferencing between teachers and students. all of the appropriate legal guidance as it related to video conferencing between teachers and students and classes, and got that from the appropriate legal advisors. So with that, our building principals have been working with their staffs and meeting regularly, multiple times during the week with their staff on Zoom meetings or Google meetings, developing curriculum, developing differentiated curriculum for all students. And if you were to take a look at, I hope you have gone through our remote learning site, we've provided a tremendous amount of resources for our students, which includes our remote learning plan, the instructional model that we are using, the legal guidance involved with the remote learning plan in using in a virtual world. For parents, we've provided guides to the Seesaw platform for grades K through two. We've also provided guides for parents on the Google Classroom guide, so that they can be invited by teachers into the Google classrooms to help monitor what their students are doing, as well as the Google Meet and Google Hangouts. If you go onto our school links page, there's a link for each of our schools. Going into each of our schools, you will then find the plans that are laid out each week by each teacher at each school to help kids and families plan ahead of time. The guidance from the Department of Education and the commissioner was to really focus on spending at least half of a normal school's day within this remote learning plan, which we've adhered to. The final link on our remote learning website is our digital, all of the digital tools that are available to all of our students in a virtual and remote learning plans. If you click on that, it'll take you to our learn platform, which I've outlined a number of times this year. It's a resource that we developed and took on this year that houses all of our digital tools that have been approved by the Safety and Security and Privacy Act within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that students can use. So that's where we're at currently. The Teaching and Learning Department is currently developing another link for social emotional learning resources. Several of our school links provide that already. But that will be the next thing to go on our remote learning site for the school. And so far, so good. This week, we've gotten some pretty tremendous feedback from people, from teachers, from students, and, you know, we continue to navigate new waters as this is, you know, very new for us, so.
We also provided a number of phones. I think I shared that, one of the emails that I sent out to you folks, too. We provided a number of phones to all of our nurses, our guidance counselors, our key guidance folks. And they're in the process right now of developing some additional guidelines around it. This is such a new world for us to navigate. And I'm sure those of you, you know, Mike and Leah are finding the same thing. And especially when you really drill down to what does a nurse do, what does, and how does that, how does that all come together? Same thing with special education. And we've done a huge amount of work with special education, as has Joan DeAngelis. But I want to say too, like, everybody has, it has taken the village and countless hours, countless, countless hours, day and night. And I think everyone has just done an amazing job. I think the best that we possibly could have done. So I feel very good, too, about the work that has been done. So Todd, I know I've said this to you in our meeting yesterday, but great leadership on your part with your teaching and learning team. So I thought that they did a tremendous job. So with that, can I turn over, thanks, Todd?
There are questions about online learning first.
Okay, do you want to do that first before we wrap up? Sure.
Leah?
So not so much a question, but just a reiteration that because we weren't able to do a full rollout below or second grade and below of devices, just to remind parents that if they really do need a device, that they can contact their principal, right?
So again, if there is a need for a device in a home where there isn't a device that a student can use, they should be contacting the building principal. And we will work, you know, we will certainly work with families to get them a device. But we're also keeping in mind, too, that there is a major health crisis, and our tech team has been working night and day in coming into buildings. And we need to, you know, get devices, reconfigure devices, get them to people. And they have been going above and beyond. So if there is a significant need, by all means, there's no device in the home. A student needs a device, particularly for those, you know, younger students, you certainly can do that. If you contact the principal, and then we will go from there to get them a device.
I think we also remind folks, too, we are not one-to-one at that lower grade level. So we don't have a plethora of devices that we can just hand out. And so that's why I think you're hearing Dr. McGuire saying, we're really looking at just those that really are in need.
Okay. All right. Elaine?
Hi, I just want to request that you, as an administration, the principals, continue to communicate and demonstrate to the families and to the staff that mental health and well-being is of utmost importance right now. It's only been three days. And, you know, moms talk to other moms, parents talk to other parents. And while it's funny, because everyone pretty much agrees that what families are being asked to do feels very reasonable, everyone's still struggling. Particularly as the kids get younger and younger, because they need more of that logistical help in order to complete their assignments. And I think, like, there's not a mom in town that doesn't feel like a complete failure right now. And I think that people just need to know that that's normal, and that's okay.
And what about people's ability to contact? Because in the course of normal school time, contact the teacher directly, contact the principal. You had mentioned about deployment of telephones so that school staff don't have to give out their own cellphone number?
No, we didn't do that, like, we didn't, no, please, I want to be cautious. We didn't order 600 phones for our employees.
I'm saying, I'm saying that it is identifying an area of where the parents turn, how are they being encouraged to contact whom?
So can I just go back after that point, just really quickly? And then, Todd, if I'm missing anything, if you can jump in. Certainly, people reach out to Todd, they reach out to me, they reach out to their principals, and they're reaching out to teachers. And we're all responding very quickly to them. It's generally through emails. But having said that, even if they are calling into our offices, for example, right now, we've set it up so that those voicemails, for example, Steve, I think you left one or two voicemails for me. I've generally gotten back to him within the hour, because it goes right to Alita, and it funnels right to my computer right away. I hear the voicemail message right away, and I make contact. So I think we're pretty much all set up like that now. So I think that I think even though it seems like it would be strange that you couldn't connect with us, it's actually not true. People are connecting very easily with us right now, and we're being as responsive as we possibly can. And I think, Elaine, if I can just say one other thing, too, and I've stressed this with a number of parents who've reached out to me, too, and to your point, and we've stressed this very, very much with our administrative team, the need for flexibility for everyone through this. I think it's so critical that we don't lose sight that we are in the middle of a national health crisis. And what we're trying to do is insert education in there, where some sense of normalcy or some sense of routine, or some sense of, like, just keeping the wheel going for our children. And somehow, it doesn't always feel like a great fit. We're trying to do the best we can to be, have it be as smoothly as possible. But the very point that you made, Elaine, we've had that conversation at the large admin group meetings time and time again, because we, you know, you've got one kid on the, well, I don't, but one kid on the hip, one, you know, one kid running around it, somebody else, you know, it's just, it's a very strange time for all of us to navigate. We all need patience and tolerance and understanding and kindness right now.
But to Elaine's point, people that she's hearing from, who are frustrated or feeling like they're not doing a good job, they contact who? The teacher, the principal? Where do they go for the support they need to help their kids?
Todd, do you want to take that, or do you want me to take that?
Yeah, I mean, I think the first, you know, the first contact, particularly if it has to do with a particular class or a particular lesson, certainly is to the teacher. And I think that's why we've used the Google Classroom, because teacher inviting parents into that Google Classroom is almost as if they are a student in that classroom. So that's certainly the first point of contact, as it always should be. I know our principals and our assistant principals are, you know, online with us at a moment's notice, should they need to be contacted for something, too. And like Brooke mentioned, which is why we got, you know, phones for our guidance counselors and, you know, those staff that, you know, can certainly be contacted and be in contact with parents.
Okay, does that help, Elaine?
Oh, yeah. And just to be clear, I was not suggesting that anybody was unavailable. I know, like, personally, I've had great communication with the teacher and other people. I've said the same thing. It's just don't necessarily have 30 minutes in the day to sit down and, like, walk through things. I think it's just more of a, we're all really pressed for time right now. And so sometimes the best support is like a 9:00 p.m. Zoom call with your friends and a glass of wine. Like, that's the kind of level of support that we're at right now.
Okay, got it. It's 9:13. Sorry, I didn't mean that. It's very unprofessional. Okay. So Brooke, Unit C, is that where we're going next?
Okay, so I'm going to turn this over to Anne Marie and Pat, please, to just talk about our Unit C folks. And then we're going to want to make a motion to make sure that those folks are paid for the next round.
Elaine is ready to do that, right, Elaine?
Yep. Do you want me to start, or?
No, no, no. Oh, wait, yeah, because that's like the right way. Make the motion, and then they can tell us.
Okay. I will move that all full-time and non-exempt hourly employees on paid active status at the time the school closure began and remain on paid active status until May 4th be paid their regular compensation and benefits.
Second.
Okay, can Anne Marie and Pat present, please?
Somebody second?
Yes, I will second.
Oh, I thought it was Brooke that second. Thanks, Leah.
Thank you. Pat and I wanted to share with you what our custodial food service and extended school day learning people are doing during the school closure. Starting with the custodians, the custodians are doing building checks. They're walking around the perimeter outside each school building for security reasons. They're going down the hallways, down the classrooms. They're doing boiler checks, they're going into the mechanical rooms to make sure that everything seems to be humming along the way it should be doing. They're running the water and flushing the toilets in each of the schools so that the trash grains don't get dried up. Learned a lot about that custodial stuff. They're emptying the trash and disinfecting any areas where staff may have gone in during the closure. They helped in the distribution of the telephones, the cell phones, and with the camera installations. They helped install LED lights in a couple of the gyms and in some of the hallways and stairwells in the schools. And they're prepping now for outside work that will start soon with the nice weather. Starting tomorrow, all of our custodial staff are taking OSHA 10 training. It's a 10-hour training that will result in OSHA 10 certification, covers workplace safety and health, and helps them increase their awareness of workplace hazards. One of our vendors is providing them with repressurer, refresher training videos on restroom cleaning and disinfecting, disinfecting educational facilities, carpet and tile care, and equipment care. And then our insurer, Meyer, is providing training to them on bloodborne pathogens and hazardous communication. And the completion of that training, in addition to having trained our custodians, will also render us eligible for discount on our, credit on our insurance. Food service employees, I think you all know, have been providing meals three days a week. Last number I heard is that the day that, last heard that they had provided 300 meals in that one day. So the employees have been doing the preparation, the packaging, and the safe distribution of those meals. And then after the meals are distributed, they clean up, they do the efforts. Also, they need to do the logistics that are related to that task. They need to move and transfer food at times from between the kitchens. And they're identifying any food that's reaching its shelf life. If it doesn't look like they're, we're going to be able to use it for that shelf life, they're arranging up where it'd be donated to food pantries who will be able to use it. They're also doing training, most notably, they're going to be training or renewing their training on serve-safe training. And a bunch of other trainings are related to the food service. Lastly, our extended learning staff, Raina has organized four areas of work, three for everyone, and then a fourth area for the site coordinators. Four areas of training, project activities, and social emotional focus. Those are for everyone. And then the site coordinators are also doing some work with family engagement. The extended learning staff works varying hours. The site coordinators work 20 hours a week. We also have some that work from between 10 and 17 hours, and we have some who work less than 10 hours a week. So Raina has kind of varied what her expectations are, what they will be doing within, you know, the confines of their families. So that the 20-hour people, for instance, with the training, the 20-hour people are going to do three or four of the training videos. The 10 to 17-hour people are going to do two or three. And the people who work the lists in 10 hours a week are going to do one or two of them. On the training, for the training portion of it, Raina has made arrangements with Fred Pryor to do some online videos. They can choose, the staff can choose from topics relating to business writing and grammar, computer skills, time management, things like handling interruptions, prioritizing your work, and then communication. So there was somewhat an effective communication, listening skills, interpersonal skills, conflict resolution. Her secondary focus is project activities. She gave them a template, and they're each going to, everyone's going to create a short video, making a craft, or doing an activity. An example that's already been completed and submitted was someone had an interest in submitting something about paper plate, Monet, Lily pads, and sunflowers. That's the kind of thing that they're doing. And Raina said she's actually learning about the special interests of a lot of her staff that she had no idea. The third is the social emotional focus. Raina has distributed a list of recommended resources. They're asked to read some of these, and then provide her with a few insights that they took from the readings. Site coordinators additionally are doing some family engagement work. What they're asking to do is write a not-too-extinct one-page article that she can later distribute on a subject or topic to help families connect with their children. She says it's going well. Also, too, our the people that category, those three categories of employees, indeed, all of our employees are able to participate in a couple of free wellness activities, free Zoom classes from our insurer. Managing stress in times of uncertainty is one of the popular ones. And my favorite, flattening the curve of weight gain during the shutdown. That's what our Unit C is up to.
I can't wait to see that data. All right. Anything else? That's a lot. Todd, do you have anything to add?
I just want to put out there, too, that about the central office staff, my office, the people in Anne Marie's office, those are getting paid, all the procurement processes are taking place in all HR and payroll processes are taking place as well. And everybody is really doing the best job they possibly can remotely coming into the office periodically, paperwork, doing a really fine job. Very proud of them.
Thank you. Any questions?
If I could just add, you said the word proud, and it made me think, that's how we ended our big meeting yesterday, big admin meeting, is I had them each person go around and give one word that kind of symbolized what their thinking was at this point in time, as we're going through all this. And the word kept coming. Probably every other person, that's how I feel. I feel proud of my school, I'm proud of my staff. And pride was just huge as we ended that meeting yesterday.
Thank you. We ready to vote? So we're voting to extend the pay for the hourly Unit C folks through May 4. Steve?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Leah?
Yes.
Mary? Joseph?
Yes.
Brett?
I think I have to abstain. My wife is in Unit C.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Elaine?
Yes.
And Mike? Yes. Okay.
Yes.
So I think the last thing for us is the MSBA feasibility study, Brooke?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. And don't forget, I do have one or two items on the superintendent's report that I'm going to.
Get this out of the way, and then we'll go to that.
Sure. So the MSBA feasibility study, so just a couple of quick things on that, just the MSBA potential project in general. I've had a number of communications with MSBA. You can imagine, we're all in the same position. And one of the concerns I have is, you know, we're expected to start this eligibility period in June 1. And I'm worried about this. I'm worried about the timing of it. And I said, you know, I feel right now, especially in this particular time, this particular era, that we're going to be kind of out of sync with that. I think we really need to be able to access our community and get out and have face-to-face conversations and that kind of thing. So I'm worried about that. So I suggested that, you know, it would be really interesting if a number of us, I know that they stagger them all, but if a number of us were feeling the same thing, that perhaps MSBA could consider staggering us, but pushed out a little bit further than the June 1 eligibility time. So maybe our eligibility could maybe start in September or something like that. So and with that comes the concern, and I express this as well to MSBA, who's been just amazing through this, and had a fair amount of contact with me. I know that our town. I know that our town meetings, for example, have now been pushed forward. And right now the city, I believe all of them are sitting at June twenty second. But we, I think we all recognize that that may or may not happen. And so if the June twenty second meeting doesn't happen, then, you know, when you ask the town manager, but what do you think might be the next time? September is the obvious time because they're saying, you know, we probably wouldn't hold a town meeting in the summer. And that makes total sense too. And you know, somebody had mentioned the notion of, are, do we look at differently at Quorum? And this whole new world of how we're doing business, so many things have to be, have to be thought through. And then I'm thinking, okay, if we do this meet, this meeting in September, and what happens if two of our towns accept this, but one doesn't? And then I have to go back and if, especially if we start in June and we have to do something else, you can see where my, my concern is that I feel that we're gonna be running up against a clock that I'm very uncomfortable with. So, um, we'll wait and see what kind of what their thinking is on this. Um, it wasn't something I said, I'm, I'm not pushing, I'm not being cranky. I mean, uh, if you say June first, that's what it is. We'll adopt and we'll, we'll do whatever we have to do. But to me, it would make sense that maybe we do a little bit of rethink here, but I know that this is not something we're in charge of. This is M S B A and, and of course we defer to their, their wisdom. Um, and so that's one piece of that, just to let you know that communication is ongoing and that I've asked for the notion of to rethink our eligibility start date. Um, the other piece i- i- is with regards to the feasibility study itself. Now, we had had much discussion with the notion of putting that, that ceiling at two million and less. And, uh, uh, but the ceiling would be there. And we, we had, we had done a lot of outreach to other school districts and said, you know, why did you, why did you come in at that two million mark? And, and basically we heard timing began because you don't wanna have to go back out. So that two million is really the, the mark that, you know, most people were telling us that we should stay with. We took a look at other school districts, what they had done. Um, and so when we brought that, that uh, that notion of the two million dollar ceiling to you, we felt very comfortable with it. And I still feel very comfortable with that. Um, however, I did receive, um, an email from Don Low, um, maybe about a week ago, or just shortly after the, the board of selectmen met. And the board of selectmen for Bolton apparently, um, and I haven't heard anything on this front from the other two communities, but apparently the town, uh, the board of selectmen of Bolton felt, and, and I, I hate to paraphrase him, but I felt maybe a little bit more comfortable with the notion of one point five million versus two million. Um, again, I, I don't know that it makes all that much difference to us. I mean, as long as we have something on the warrant that puts this forward and gets this going. It's just that if, if, when we go to do, do the procurement process, if those things come in at higher than one point five of those, um, the, uh, the proposals come in at higher, higher than one point five, of course, the obvious happens that we're short money and, and we have to go back and do something else. Um, with that said though, I, I, I'm not sure that we're at, at any other place other than to reconsider the two million. Uh, if one of our communities is saying that they're only willing to support the one point five. So, you know, I think we, we toss this out to you tonight and say, do we, do we make another motion at the one point five? Or do we push forward with the two million? Um, I, I leave this up to your
So Brooke, we, we, we're operating under a deadline to make this decision. Is that correct?
We are now, yeah, because, uh, to be honest with you, which is one of the reasons why we, I really wanted this meeting tonight to make sure that we got this in because there, uh, I think it's Bolton actually that has the new, the new date of the, um, their warrant going to print on Friday, of this upcoming Friday. So, you know, we're kind of, we're kind of backed into, I don't, wouldn't say corner, we were just backed into a timeframe and it's no one's fault. It's just what, what it is. So yes, we really, I, we really need a decision from you tonight.
All right. So we're gonna do it this way without objection. Um, we, I will have Elaine read the motion. And then we will discuss and then we will vote. So Elaine, please read the motion.
All right. You sure you want me to?
It's a, it's a really long one because it's the M S B A. So I just wanna put that out there, Elaine.
I know. And just settle in ladies and gentlemen, because this is several paragraphs long. Um, I, um, so I'm, I'm reading basically the warrant article that would be on the warrant. Um, article to be determined, to see if the town will approve an amount not to exceed one point five million borrowing authorized by the Neshoba Regional School District for the purpose of paying costs of a feasibility study for the Neshoba Regional High School, twelve green row, Bolton, Massachusetts. And for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, the M S B A. Said amount to be expended at the direction of Neshoba Regional High School Building Committee. The M S B A's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the M S B A. And any study costs the district incurs in excess of the grant approved by and received from the M S B A shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Any grant that the district may receive from the M S B A for the study shall be as set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the M S B A. Uh, move that the town hereby approves an amount not to exceed one point five million dollars borrowing authorized by the Neshoba, wait, is this the? Nope, this is not the same paragraph. Um, paying, uh, Neshoba Regional School District for the purpose of paying costs of a feasibility study for the Neshoba Regional High School, twelve green row, Bolton, Massachusetts, including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto parentheses, the study. And for which the district may be eligible for a school construction grant from the Massachusetts School Building Authority, M S B A, said amount to be expended at the discretion, direction of the Neshoba Regional High School Building Committee that the town acknowledges that the M S B A's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the M S B A and any study costs the district incurs in excess of the, any grant approved by and received from. The M S B A shall be the sole responsibility of the district and its member municipalities. Provided further that any grant that the district may receive from the M S B A for the study shall be as set forth in feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the M S B A. Provided that the approval of the district's borrowing by this vote shall be subject to and contingent upon an affirmative vote of the town to exempt its allocable share of the vote. All right, shallable share of the amounts required for the payment of interest and principal on said borrowing from the limitation on taxes imposed by M G L fifty-nine, section twenty-one C, proposition two and a half, and that the amount of borrowing authorized by the district shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the M S B A.
The bottom line is, are we going to, we, we approved not to exceed two million? Do we wanna amend it based on the information we have from Bolton to an amount for the feasibility study? Um, not to exceed one point five million. That's the gist, correct? I beg your pardon?
Yeah, we don't have a second yet.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, sorry. Second?
Oh, second.
Mary, Mary's second is?
I think Mary's still on mute, by the way.
Mary, I think we can unmute now.
Unmute.
Oh, all right. Pat, you stay muted. You mind your own business. It's way past my bedtime. Okay.
For that, could she, uh, or read it again? I'm only teasing.
All right. So, um, so, yeah, so I, what I said, I should have said now, but that's the gist of it, correct?
Yes.
All right. Let's hear from you guys. What are your thoughts?
Mike has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mike?
Thanks. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so I think, um, I think at first glance, the unanimous vote to reconsider the article seems symbolic by the Bolton Board of Selectmen, but um, they also voted unanimously for the article to be disapproved. So just to give everyone some context, what that means is that when all of the articles come before the town of Bolton, there is a section that provides um, community members with the Board of Selectmen recommendation. So if you take this from the perspective of someone who's not fully privy to the details of, of, um, the article, if it says disapproved unanimously, three, nothing, um, then to me, it feels like there's a high likelihood that this is not gonna pass. And that puts us into um, a pretty precarious position. So, um, I am in favor of, of, of changing the language not to exceed, um, one point five million for that reason.
Thank you. Leah?
Can you, um, or can anybody explain the rationale for why they, um, feel the need to re- to reduce the ceiling to one point five?
Mike? Any insight?
Sure. Yeah. Um, I think, um, after reviewing some of the discussions that we had in previous school committee meetings, based on what we said was, um, typical of the costs for, um, for this to happen. I think they felt a couple of things. They felt that, um, a range of one point two to one point five was probably typical. Um, and that if we, if we requested not to exceed two million, then we would spend the extra money. From their perspective, you know, there would be a perception that we would simply spend whatever extra money we had. So, um, I think the approach is to be conservative and cautious rather than to overshoot the number. Um, unnecessarily, I suppose.
Leah? And then Joseph.
So whereas I can totally respect that board for trying to protect the taxpayer dollar, I would like to go on the record as saying I think that it is foolhardy to do that. Because if we, if it ends up, because in my opinion, in our previous conversations, I think what we said was a trend was undetectable. We could not identify a window and that's why we put it at two million. So I'm fine with going down to one point five for the reasons you just articulately stated. Um, and I will support that, but I also want to go on the record as saying that if we have to go back for more money, then Bolton's gonna have to spend more money on another meeting.
Yes. Sorry.
Mike, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, you know, I had a conversation with Don Low about this. Um, he's, he's aware of the, um, the repercussions of the number coming up above that. Um, and feels like, um, getting, uh, enough community members for a special meeting would not be an issue. Now, that's just speculation on his part, but um, that was his perspective. And I will also add, I think, um, you know, there's a pretty sizable gap between one point five and two million. Um, I think one point five basically means we would get a three, nothing approval. I don't know if going above that means getting a two to one approval or a one to two, uh, approval. I don't know. I think the one point five is the ceiling for getting that three, nothing approval. That was my understanding in my conversations with our town administrator.
Okay, uh, Joseph?
Yeah, I was gonna, can I add a little more of the further context to this? Because, um, what, what hasn't been presented here is a, a very, uh, interesting wrinkle to all this is that, and again, uh, I wanna show due respect to my fellow colleagues from Bolton, but, uh, their advisory committee uh, did not support the selectmen in regards to their decision to disapprove the warrant article. As a matter of fact, they voted on reconsideration and it became a tie. And what was interesting, uh, that was discussed at the meeting was that, uh, one of the advisory members basically was articulating the, the reasons why we were looking at the two million dollar cap. And he'd said, and I will quote him, he says, "Look, if the thing comes in at one point five million plus ten dollars, they're gonna be required to come back to full this, uh, community to secure approval to pay the additional ten dollars." Now, I, I simplify this, but, um, I, I thought that what he was presenting was more in line with what we were looking at as far as the two million dollar cap was concerned. And, uh, I, I was very happy that he spoke basically glowingly about the district and he said that he trusted the district and he didn't believe that the district would, you know, secure authorization for two million dollars and then thus go out and spend two million dollars. And I think he's right about that. I think we proved ourselves last year, uh, with the capital expenditures of the high school and what have you. So I'm gonna take a little contrarian point on this and, and just say, look, I, I would support, and I'm probably gonna be voted out on this one, but I would support keeping it at the two million dollar cap. I supported it back when we first voted on it. I still support it. Now, in addition to that, I also, like Mike, had a conver- I didn't have a conversation. I had an email communication with Don Low and I presented this possibility to him. And I don't think this is anything you wanna consider, but it's something to think about. If in fact, we don't take any action this tonight, and I think that the superintendent wants us to take some action this night to get it to the, uh, to, to the, um, town of Bolton. But I proposed to Don this. I said, "Look, would not the town be authorized to grant us borrowing authority at the two million dollar cap? With the understanding that we would only be permitted to expend up to one point five million dollars and that anything over and above that could then be, uh, you could, part of the warrant article could read that the boards of selectmen for the sending communities would then have authority to authorize anything above that." And he found my question to be intriguing. He didn't necessarily agree with it, but he also said to me that he wasn't sure that his position was correct as well. So I, I think there's a lot to consider here. In addition to that, I, I know that he, he had stated in the meeting that he thought it would be the cleanest way to get, you know, the article to the town before the, uh, the, the warrant closed, so that it would be in the warrant and what have you. But again, procedurally, we're not compelled to that. We could put in the two million and then we get to town meeting, we feel, look, you know, we think we don't, this is gonna pass. We can always amend. Now, the risk is you don't, you can't always guarantee that your amendment will be allowed. But I, I just think there's a little bit of flexibility here. And, and, and in addition to that, I, I will say this from a, just a personal standpoint, uh, my community hasn't chimed in on this yet. They've been given the information, but they haven't told us what they wanna do. And I'm like, you know, is Bolton driving the bus here? And I, I suppose they are because they've gone out and said, "Look, we're not gonna support anything above one point five." But I just think there's some, some things to consider here. And I, I just really feel that the two million dollar cap is the correct thing. I think that, you know, if we have to, we have to go back and, and get approval for, uh, additional funds, it is gonna require a second town meeting of the three communities. And to be perfectly honest with the mayor chairman, I'm not really jazzed about going to a town meeting right now. And I live for town meetings, you know?
So, so my question is, if all of the towns' town meetings are on the same day right now scheduled for June twenty-second, why is Bolton's deadline for warrants different than Lancaster's? I don't understand that.
I don't know. I can answer that. I, I do.
And why aren't the other towns saying, have, have, have they not made a decision on it? So that, that's what I don't understand.
I think all three town, I think all three towns, uh, Pat, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that they're all different. Uh, you know, I think that they probably maybe use different printers or different, you know, different organizations. And so normally, correct me if I'm wrong, Pat, but generally they're always a little bit different uh, uh, in terms of when the articles have to be presented to them for going to print.
That's true. It's, it's very different. Um, uh, I could say it, it's, it can be weeks between when they're required to have that information. I usually send it, things like that out all at the same time, but, yeah. Um, yeah. I would imagine it has to do with, um, you know, having the personnel to assemble everything then.
Something to do with statute. I thought they had to have them submitted by statute.
Oh, I'm sure.
Yeah. So that's why it just seemed weird because Joseph and I were at the select board meeting on Monday. And they, they weren't, that, there wasn't this sense of pressure to about the number. But Mike, what did you wanna say?
So, um, a question and then, um, a comment. The first question is, um, I just need someone to reflect on that. Do we need all three towns to approve or two of the three?
Oh, borrowing is all three.
All three.
We have to have all three.
Okay.
And so, yeah, if this doesn't, if this doesn't fly, which is one of the reasons why I'm worried about the,
Yeah.
Um, having the time in that eligibility period to have to go back. And especially now when this came up, I think that that's one of the reasons what drove my thinking in terms of I better ask to be delayed in this in case we need to go back for another additional one or two town meetings. Or is, you know, uh, Steve would say like our, our nuclear option, if that's where we, and we end up, I need, like, the district needs time to, to go through that. I mean, in a perfect world, we'd be able to just go and do this one at one point in time. But yes, Mike, we need all three.
Well, okay, so my, my second comment was, um, to Joe and then, um, regarding my conversation with Don Low. From what I understood, Joe, the last time we had this conversation is that you felt that Lancaster would not be high on, um, asking their community for more funds uh, in this spending season. And, uh, given that we haven't heard one way or the other from Lancaster, I think that puts us in an especially precarious position. So if, if we need one, if, if, if just one of the three towns votes it down and we know one town, the selectman has a unanimous recommendation to disapprove. And the other town, from what I understand in my conversation with my town administrator, um, I don't know, it does not seem particularly high on spending that money. I think, I think we're in a dangerous spot if we continue on as two million dollars.
Elaine?
So, I, I'm a little confused because my recollection of our meetings discussing how much we should recommend for the borrowing. Because my recollection of our meetings discussing how much we should recommend for the borrowing was that when asking schools that have done this before, they said that it would be really risky at one point five and that the smart decision would be to, it would be to use this two million dollar cap. And that based on the actual cost of feasibility studies that other schools have done, that, that it would cost more. Not that we were, not that they thought it would cost one point five million and we just wanted to be safe and added, add some money on the top. So I think, I mean, God knows what the economy is gonna look like, so who knows what something's gonna cost moving forward? But I think that there's a very strong likelihood that this will cost more than one point five million dollars. Like, I don't, I don't think there's a chance. I think that we'd like, we're, we're gonna have to go back. And so I, I don't understand what, I don't, I guess I'm just confused at what they would have seen that thought, that made them think, "Oh, they're just inflating the number because they want to."
So what's the basis of the decision, Mike? What, did they do their, I know we had a lot of comparative data. Um, what did Bolton look at in, in coming to this conclusion?
Well, you know, it's hard for me to speak on their behalf, because I actually didn't speak to the board. I expect to, I spoke to the town administrator. Um, and when we had these discussions prior to the first vote, we, um, had, I can't recall honestly, um, specifically, but we had bounced around this idea of about one point five. And evidently, that's, that's what stuck. Um, and so, you know, to your point, uh, Elaine, it's not, it's not that I disagree with you. I think we're, we're, we're being faced with this reality. Whether we agree with it or not, we're being faced with the reality of getting this big stamp on our, on our article that reads "disapproved three-nothing." Um, so I, I, I completely get where you're coming from. I think that that's, it's one risk or the other. It's really one risk or the other.
Mary?
We're gonna have to decide.
Mary?
So what I remember is that in, in what we were given as the study of looking at other districts, it wasn't that anyone said it should be one point five. What they said was that they felt that, um, they needed to have more money, that they were glad if they had somewhat overestimated. And so that, it was general. It wasn't that they, you know, at least from what I heard of Pat calling people, it was they said, "Here on that side of making sure you have enough." Now, Bolton had talked to us, and part of my motion at that time was that we go with the one point five as Bolton is looking at its financial picture. And so that was what I, I was recommending, listening to Bolton, as, as Mike is too. And, uh, and it just seems to me that we, you know, I'm gonna advocate for it again. That was what I, that was the motion I made about one point five. And, and I'm gonna advocate for that again. But it wasn't as though other districts said to us, "Go with one point five." The general advice was, "Make sure you have enough money. Make sure that you overestimate somewhat." And that was what I heard.
Nice.
Is there, is there room for a compromise here?
And what would that be?
One point seven-five, one point eight, one point seven, something like that?
I think we're running the risk, though, uh, with the notion that Bolton has already made this decision and they're going to print right away. So I think, you know, I, I, I think we're kind of up against the wall a little bit on this in terms of timing.
And I think that if we do need more money, then you just have to back. You know, I mean, it's not like we, we, the, the amount.
We didn't say it in the beginning.
Not to exceed. Doesn't mean you're gonna spend that much. I heard Mike say that there's, there's a, a concern that if that's the amount, then, ooh, we're gonna spend it. Um, I don't, you know, I, I don't know how to get my head around that. My concern is that we missed the window. We're sort of in a bind here. If we, Bolton is looking for a decision now. Um, I don't know what this economic climate is going, how that's gonna bode for this in any way, shape or form. Um, so I don't know. Mike?
Given, um, the ideas that Joe, um, had spoke to about kind of getting creative with, um, the way that the money is handled, is there a possibility, um, that regardless of where we land on this, um, that at, at the town meeting, particularly in Bolton, because of this, that you could speak to, um, how that money can or cannot be spent, so that there's a little bit more clarity? And, and, and maybe kind of explain to the Bolton community what the risks are with voting one point five versus voting two versus voting one point seven? So that, I, I, I don't know. I, I, I think that this caters to people who don't quite, uh, who haven't been quite following, um.
Yeah, I was just thinking that same thing, Mike. I think it, it, it probably falls right in that area exactly. People who haven't been following and haven't maybe done some of their own due diligence.
Yep, yeah, so, uh, I don't know. Food for thought there.
Yeah, Elaine?
Um, so is, is the deal here that if we approve one point five, then the Bolton Select Board automatically approves the article? Like, what are the chances we vote for one point five and they still disapprove it?
I think, um, from, from my understanding, that they, they would approve unanimously one point five.
Uh, that was, that was how I felt. That was how I took it from the email as well. But I don't, I don't wanna speak for them, because I don't know.
Are they having another meeting before it goes to print?
Well, I, I think that was the point, that if we don't make any changes, then they will go to print with the article reading "disapproved." And so I guess the assumption there is that if we do change the language, then they will revote.
Joseph?
You know, a couple of things. First of all, um, having watched the, uh, select board meeting, a selectmen's meeting twice, I can pretty much guarantee the fellow members of this committee that there's no way that at one point five, they're not gonna vote in favor. They all but said that during the meeting, okay? And second of all, the other issue is, is that I, I think that, you know, that, and I agree with Mike, and I've always been a big believer that, you know, when you see the disapproval in the warrant, that, um, that could be very problematic for anybody who's a proponent of that warrant article. However, again, I, I still think that we, we always have that opportunity to, you know, carpe diem, seize the day at town meeting, stand up, amend the, the, the article to the amount that, that we're looking to secure, if at one point five or one point two or whatever it is. And so I, I just am like, I, 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 like I said, Elaine raises a good point. I mean, when are they going to print on this? Are they going to have another meeting before this? Because they've already voted to disapprove the warrant article. So, I mean, if we submit another warrant article that goes to print this week, that, is it just going devoid of, of editorial? I don't know.
Other thoughts? Leah?
I'm worried to risk it, guys. I do not want that disapproval on the warrant, and we are out of time, so.
Other thoughts? Mary?
I, I don't want it to have to go to the floor. I mean, we may be talking about the budget anyway, if, if we have to talk on, on the floor. But for most citizens, when they see the advisory has disapproved, um, you know, an article, they tend to, to vote the way the advisory has, um, has indicated.
Other thoughts?
One, one last thing. So I, I apologize, just wanted, just to be clear. Advisory did not vote to disapprove. Advisory initially voted to approve the, the warrant article. And then in following suit with the select, the selectmen in Bolton, they voted to reconsider, and it ended up a tie. So as far as the town administrator was concerned, there's not gonna be any editorial regarding that. It's gonna go in as neutral. So I, I think that there is support in Bolton and, and there's support on the advisory committee.
For one point five?
No, for two million.
What are you saying, for two?
Wait, there's support in Bolton?
On the advisory committee, absolutely.
Not the select board?
No, they had, they, they took the first bite of the apple, and they voted, they initially, they actually voted on reconsideration. They initially voted to support this. And then they brought it up on reconsideration, and they voted it down. And they basically said that one of the select, selectmen members said, "Look, I, I, I don't see what you get for the extra five hundred thousand dollars, so I'd be much more comfortable voting at one point five." That's basically what he said. And then they went to advisory, and advisory said, "Well, you know, you know, one of the members said, 'Look, we understand the rationale behind the, the warrant article.' It was to avoid the necessity of coming back for a second town meeting or a third town, whatever it takes, special town meeting, what have you. Especially in Bolton, we have to have, we have a quarm requirement." And he said, "They need additional, you know, funds. They're gonna have to come back to us." Said it makes sense to do it above, you know, at the, at the two, two million dollar figure, with the understanding that, or the presumption, that we're not gonna be, uh, that greedy about it, that we're going to look at this thing from a parsimonious standpoint and, and spend what we actually need and not go up to that two million dollar mark. So I, I don't know. I'm just, I, I feel lucky about this.
That's wonderful. Stephen?
I don't like being blackmailed, which is what we are being done. I think the appropriate number is two million, but in order to reduce the angst, I would vote for one point five million, with the condition that if there's anything that's over one point five million, it becomes Bolton's responsibility solely.
I don't think that's within the statutes.
I get it.
No, but I, I, I think that, no, but I think that the understanding is that, okay, we get it.
Lit among the three towns.
Excuse me, I'm talking now, Steve.
I'm sorry.
Boy, um.
Quiet.
The, we can be assured, it sounds like, of one point five. But the towns need to know that if we need more, we gotta come back for it.
Yep.
That's how I feel.
You're right.
Um, Leah, how do you feel?
Uh, yeah, I think that I feel the same way as Steve, but I think, you know, the economy is such a mess right now. And I think that we are gonna climb a very steep hill in everything fiscally, that I think, you know, who knows, maybe we'll find, um, an architectural firm that'll do it on a dime. So, you know.
They'll have the lowest bid for sure. Mary, what are your thoughts?
I'm ready to vote on it, you know, and go for the one point five.
Okay, Joseph?
Are you asking me what, what are you asking me?
I'm asking you, we're, we're saying that reluctantly, we would agree to the one point five, with the understanding that if we needed more money, we would come back to the towns.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, absolutely. I, I'm, I'm gonna support the one point five. And, and much like my colleague from, from Stowe, I'm gonna hold my nose while I do it, but I'm gonna support it, yeah.
Brett, any thoughts?
One point five. Not happy about it, but one point five.
Elaine?
I'm with Steve.
Mike?
Well, I'm not with Steve in the sense that, um, I feel like Bolton is somehow blackmailing the school committee. I think Stowe is in a very different position this year than Bolton is. And I think if you understood that, then you would understand where Bolton's perspective, uh, was derived. I am in support of, of, uh, modifying this to one point five, with the understanding that if we have to come back, we have to come back. And that might be something that we have to say at the town meeting.
All right, and so it sounds like we have a consensus. We have the motion, we have the second, we've discussed it. I'm gonna call the vote. All those in favor, I'm gonna put it in a nutshell of approving the feasibility study at the amount of one, uh, an amount not to exceed one point five million. Steve?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Leah?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And the understanding that we have, and it doesn't need to go into the warrant, is that if we exceed one point five, we'll be back, correct?
Yes.
Got it. All right. Last thing. Brooke, superintendent's update. You said there were some things you needed to share.
Yeah, just a couple of, these are super quick, um, MCAS. Uh, somebody sent me a note, I think from Lancaster last night, thinking that there's been some decisions made. No decisions made right now, uh, on MCAS, uh, just a, a wait and see. Um, circuit breaker, lots of discussion swirling around that. Um, my biggest concern is that it could affect, just like our, our transportation, it could affect our budget for next year. And, um, so, you know, Pat and I, I know we've got another meeting again tomorrow for, um, and Todd for, uh, budget as we're working through this, but just let you know that we're well aware of some of the potential issues these things are gonna cause. Graduation is still up in the air. Again, it's one of the things that we were looking for from the commissioner, that we thought, you know, we would get some, um, guidance across the, the state for some unified front on that. Um, as of, as of tonight, nothing, uh, concrete from our end. And so I've talked to, um, Steve Colley, about the fact that I think we need to start talking about, if this, if we don't get guidance, we need to start thinking about what this is going to look like. So I wouldn't mind Mike and Leah, maybe we can talk offline sometime. I wouldn't mind knowing what's happening in your districts outside of this. Um, budget, just so you know, that, that's continuing right now, particularly in light of where we're at. And I think Leah, like, you made a really good point earlier. There's part of me that agrees with Elaine saying, "Hey, things will be way more expensive like after this." And there's another point that says, "Maybe it's gonna be just the opposite," you know? Um, who knows where all of this is going to land? Um, the other thing is with regards to, um, our, our April break. And, and that's an area that I just wanna put out there tonight, because that was another area that the superintendents were really hoping that we would get something unified, consistent across the state, and that didn't happen. And again, when I say this, I'm not blaming anyone. I think that there are lots of reasons why the state has come forward and said, "You know what? We've chosen not to rule on this. We're, we're gonna let the, our local communities do that." And so we received, I think that was maybe two days ago or a day, maybe it's been yesterday, that April break is really up to local communities now. And so I said, you know, I'm gonna put, make sure that I put this on our agenda. Um, I, we've reached out. Both Todd and I have had different outreach. He has, um, more outreach on the, the North Shore, for example. I'm much more central Massachusetts and, um, uh, a little bit further south. And, and that, that's kind of where my connections lie, and a little bit northern, uh, central Massachusetts. And so the, the information that I'm seeing going around right now is a little bit contradictory to some of the information he's seeing. The districts in our area, there's more of a overarching look to keep April break just as it is. As per the calendar says, it is a break. And I know that I've had a couple of parents who reached out and just said, "Please keep April break, just an April break. We need a break right now." Um, you know, so there are some schools, and particularly in the North Shore, Todd can maybe speak to this, that are saying, "Well, we think we'll use those days to kind of bank time and try to get out earlier." Um, but, you know, a lot of us are saying, "We don't, we don't even know if we're going back right now." So, um, so I think that every, districts are kind of taking a, a different look at this. So we just put this out for discussion tonight, because if we wait, like, uh, clearly April twenty-second is not a time that we, we can make a decision on this. Uh, Mike?
So, um, Lexington voted to, um, remove April break, which got us out, obviously, uh, earlier in June.
Yeah.
Um, and, and from a teacher's perspective, I said, "Look, we're here. We're here, and no one's going anywhere for April break." Um, I do, I do appreciate the fact that you said that this is probably gonna be community-specific. So what is true for one district, uh, may not be true for another district. So we might have to, uh, tap into our communities to see what their sense is.
Brooke, we sent out an, or I can't, was it about the calendar? No, it was about something. Beginning of the school year or post-reading school year, you guys sent out a really quick survey out to parents.
Yeah, I believe.
Oh, I know it was about, was about the early release days, maybe?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Could we give something out like tomorrow and say, "Turn this around. What are your thoughts?"
We can, we can. I, I just said, then we'll need to meet, and I'm fine to do something like that. And Todd and I had even talked about that actually earlier today, is that something we should think about. But then we'll need to meet again quickly and make a decision.
We have a one-item agenda. We could put that together, because I think the, I, I, I have to look at the waiver. I, I, I don't think we have to do forty-eight hours, um, in this, the during time. We, that's waived. Is it, where did Alita go? Where is she when you need her? Um, no, so I, I, I think we can set up a quick, hi, Alita, we don't have a forty-eight hour.
It's not waived.
It's not waived? All right, we can do it. But I would want, to Mike's point, let's see what this community wants to do. Um, 'cause to what Elaine said, it would give parents a break from, from feeling awful as parents because they can't teach their kids.
I know, but that's heartbreaking, Elaine.
Elaine, yeah.
Yeah, I, I heard about this from some other districts this morning. Um, and the conversation we were having is that if there's any chance we do go back to school, like, I think that we would rather have this, the education done in the building in person. And so going late on, for a year, maybe it's not such a bad thing this year. Um, Um, because that would give time, kids time in the buildings with their teachers. I mean, that that assumes you're going back. I don't know if that will happen, but.
Cuz one of those days is a holiday.
That's correct, it's four days. That's absolutely right.
Do that quick little survey like you did for the other thing?
And Leah, Leah's got her hand up too.
Oh, sorry, Leah.
Just really quickly, I would um, I would hope that you would ask the teachers to, the staff.
Ask the teachers and the parents, and then we'll disregard what everyone votes and make the decision ourselves like we always do.
That's not true, but okay. So Alita, uh, Alita, we and I, Todd and I, we can um, we can quickly connect tomorrow morning and let's get something sent out.
That sounds good. All right, what else we got?
That's it, those were, that was my big, my big other thing. Are there any other motions that we may have missed, or can I just go back to you in a minute?
Just the consent agenda.
Okay.
All right, look, can we have the motion for the consent agenda, Elaine?
Here, I move to approve the consent agenda of April eighth, twenty twenty, containing the warrants of April tenth, twenty twenty, and the meeting minutes of March twenty fifth, twenty twenty.
Second.
Steve?
Second.
No, yes, second, yes, yes. Leah?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Who, Elaine and Mike? Yes, yes. All right, just real quick, I don't want a discussion, I just wanna drop a bomb as usual. I know, I've been thinking a lot about the kids, the seniors and I'm beside myself with what what they're missing out on. And I know you're going to be talking with other communities and Steve and is, can thought be given to enlisting the ideas from kids? Maybe it's not graduation as usual, but can we get some kids' ideas about if we can make this up to you or do it differently? What might that look like?
Well, in all honesty, and I I really, really, especially like the the president of their their class this year, he's just, he's fabulous. And he and I have been actually communicating through all this. And so I I said, suggested the same thing to Steve, that I, you know, I think we need to reach out to him and reach out to the whole group that has been working so hard on this, because I think that's where our ideas are. Um, you know, there's lots of stuff going across right now. I'm I'm sure Leah, Mike, you're seeing this too, virtual grads and everything else. I don't know if that's what we wanna do. I've also had parents reach out to us. Some really good, some of the parents that have reached out to me have had some really good ideas too. Um, about even some different activities be, oh, beyond graduation that sound really, really interesting. So I know that Steve is exploring that too, so this, this can't possibly be something from administration from my, right now.
Okay, so we can pick that up next time. So what I, we usually sit at the end of the meeting and figure out what we're gonna do next time. Would it be okay with folks if I connect with Brooke, look at some agenda items? We know we have to approve the student thing plan, um, and some other things, and then get out an agenda, uh, beginning of next week for folks to look at.
Well, can I, can I come back to, we really wanna make that decision pretty quickly here with regards to the April twenty second.
We have another meeting for that. We do a pop-up meeting for five minutes.
Yeah, that's a good term. If we can do a pop-up meeting just for the April break and then we can have the regular April twenty second meeting.
And we will make sure that we're compliant with open meeting law, cuz you know how I all right, any, anything else for the good of the order?
Leah has a question.
It's really quick. I think that it's really important. Um, I think that the summary statement from the principal that you read is um, it's a step toward kind of putting our high school back on its footing completely. Um, but I think that we should uh, front load some of this. I know that it's probably not prioritized in the grand scheme of things, but front load some of that work around reform.
Absolute, no, and then I'm looking at the twenty second for that.
Yeah, I I I, we're already thinking about that, Leah, as well. I mean, we've even, we've even thought about, you know, our our retreat time, for example, like our summer retreat time, adding an extra day or two to that, and what would that look like? I've already reached out to uh, you know, certainly to our legal firm to say, hey, can you, can you folks come in and do this? Or do we go back to Tim Norris and have him come in and do it? Because he he seemed to have a really good grasp of where he thought this could be. He might be the perfect person. His law firm might be the perfect uh, firm to bring in. So, yeah, we are having that kind of discussion right now.
And the work with the adults is important, but I think that the work with the kids.
Absolutely.
That's also important.
Yeah, and as policy subcommittee people, you and I can can have, do a, a meeting, we'll figure it out and get the ball rolling, okay? Steve, are you just pondering? Are you ready to?
I'm pondering.
Can you?
I am pondering a motion to adjourn.
And can I have a second? Who did that? Joe?
I did, Joe, yeah.
Joseph, okay. Steve?
Yes.
Kathy, yes. Leah?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Brett?
Yes.
Elaine?
Yes.
And Mike?
I will say yes, and also remind Brett that this is, this was a really quick meeting.
No, like, if you look at the two hours that we spent on the report, then we would have been done by eight o'clock if we hadn't had the report, just, just saying.
Brett, Kathy's record was three minutes.
No, oh, wait, what? I did.
Three minutes, she did a meeting in three minutes.
That was a one item agenda. All right, everyone, thank you so much. And again, thank you for the work that we all did and you all did with regard to uh, the investigation and responding to constituents, starting back in November with the listening sessions, just being available um, to folks and for your attention to the gravity of this. Um, so thank you. And uh, we're moving forward and we'll get better. There's a lot, there's a lot we can do and we'll all do it as a team, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You are free to take the meeting. Go.